Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, May 6, 2024. If you wish to provide public comment on tonight's agenda, please fill out a speaker card there in the back of the room and bring it to our city clerk. And now I would like to invite Monica Aparicio and Anna Pearson to provide information to those who want to participate in Spanish.
Thank you and good evening. Buenas tardes, me llamo Monica, estoy aquí con mi pareja de interpretación, Ana. Estamos hoy aquí como intérpretes. Hoy este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funcionará la interpretación. Estaremos usando la función de interpretación de Zoom. Después que termine esta explicación, se activará la función de interpretación. Si usted se está conectando de su computadora, verá un icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si se está conectando con su tableta o teléfono, pulse el más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas y a continuación elija su canal de idioma. Gracias. We're ready, thank you.
And thank you. May we have our roll call for the evening, please?
Barnacle?
President.
Kater Thompson?
Here.
Healy?
Absent.
Now?
Here.
Poseke?
Here.
Shribs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. To start tonight's agenda, let's make sure we don't have any changes or deletions. I'm looking up and down the dais and it seems we will be addressing the agenda as it's listed, going to first our proclamations for this month. And I'd like to invite Police Chief Brian Miller and Garrett Scholten, President of the Petaluma Police Officers Association, to the podium as we read this proclamation. Whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and May 12 through 18th as National Police Week in recognition of law enforcement officers nationwide who have sacrificed their lives or been disabled in the performance of their duties while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of those who dedicate their lives to the law enforcement profession and to keep our communities safe. And whereas the members of the Petaluma Police Department and law enforcement throughout the state and nation risk their lives on a daily basis to maintain peace and protect life and property in our communities. And whereas it is important to always remember Petaluma Police Officers Julius Bloom in 1898, Bert Johnson, 1925, Russell Rasmussen in 1927, and Vilho Ahola in 1998, who selflessly gave their lives while serving and protecting this community. Whereas in the United States, a total of 135 peace officers were killed in the line of duty in 2023, and 26 so far in 2024. Whereas in California, a total of seven peace officers were killed in the line of duty in 2023 and none so far this year. Whereas the City of Petaluma also recognizes the following Petaluma Police Annual Award recipients: Property Technician Carrie Navy as Vilho Ahola Most Inspirational Employee of the Year Award, Officer Ben Schott as Peace Officer of the Year, Sergeant Paul Gilman as Supervisor of the Year, Training Coordinator Shanley Mansour as Employee of the Year, and Public Safety Dispatch Amy D'Antiole as Dispatcher of the Year, and Volunteer Dennis Yucatan as Volunteer of the Year. And whereas with heavy hearts, members of the Petaluma Police Department only cherish memory of Petaluma Police Department Evidence Technician Bree Jorgensen, whose courageous battle against cancer ended tragically this year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, formally designate May 15, 2024 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and May 12 through 18, 2024 as National Police Week. Thank you. Our next proclamation is for National Preservation Month, and I would like to invite Stacy Ockley and the Executive Director of the Petaluma Museum Association and Alice Van Ammeren, Historic and Cultural Preservation Committee Vice Chair and Petaluma Museum Association Heritage Homes and Landmarks Committee, to the podium while I read. Whereas in 1973, the National Trust for Historic Preservation established National Preservation Week to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefit of historic preservation. And whereas in 2005, the National Trust extended National Preservation Week to National Preservation Month. Whereas the City of Petaluma has several policies, programs, and ordinances in place which seek to protect historic resources, including the Central Petaluma Specific Plan, the General Plan, and Chapter 15 of the Implementing Zoning Ordinance, whose purpose is to promote public health, safety, and general welfare through the protection and enhancement and perpetuation of historic and archaeological resources that are reminders of past eras, events, and individuals important to local, state, or national history. Whereas the City of Petaluma has Native American and historical-cultural resource sites which contribute to the unique character of Petaluma, including two locally designated historic districts, the Oak Hill Brewster and the A Street Historic Districts, and one nationally designated historic district, the Petaluma Historic Commercial District. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby recognize and celebrate May 2024 as National Preservation Month and call upon residents of Petaluma to celebrate National Preservation Month by viewing historic resources throughout Petaluma and through various exhibits organized by the Petaluma Historical Library and Museum and other organizations, including the Petaluma Trolley, that promote historic resources in the city. Thank you.
We want to thank you for officially recognizing May as National Historic Preservation Month for Petaluma. This marks actually the third consecutive year that Casey Graney and I have organized Preservation Month in our city. This year is the exception that the museum has really stepped up with the leadership of Stacy and really helped take over Preservation Month. Fostering an appreciation for Petaluma's cultural heritage is actually one of our current General Plan policies and one of the proposed policies for our upcoming General Plan. And overall, as a city, I think we do really well celebrating our history. One of the other policy in the current General Plan is providing incentives to encourage preservation and revitalizing historical resources. This policy is also proposed in the next General Plan, but I'm afraid we've fallen a bit short in that area. When I speak of incentives, I refer to financial support, reduce costs for preserving or rehabilitating historic buildings. We've been working on getting certified local government status since 2008, which is more than 15 years. CLG status would give us access to grant funding and technical support from the state. Furthermore, while our General Plan mentions incentive programs such as the Mills Act and the storefront improvement loan program, none of them have been implemented. We've also had the potential to reduce application and processing fees for individuals seeking to preserve historic buildings. Last week, as part of our Historic Preservation Month celebration, Catherine Reinhardt, local historian, together with City Manager, arranged for Dan Zack to speak on strategies to create incentives. And many of you, I want to thank you for being there. There were two sessions and some of you went to both, so I think that's a great way to start the conversation. So once again, I want to thank you for not only celebrating, but also preserving Petaluma's history.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, members of the City Council, and to our partners at the Historic Cultural, excuse me, Historic and Cultural Preservation Committee and the City of Petaluma. Historic preservation is not merely a matter of nostalgia. It contributes to a vibrant economy while preserving the unique character of our built environment. Historic preservation attracts tourists, stimulates local businesses, generates jobs, and enhances property values, just to name a few benefits. Preservation initiatives also provide opportunities for community engagement and collaboration, fostering stewardship and a sense of pride in place, and nurturing a collective responsibility for safeguarding our heritage. We're fortunate in Petaluma to have a rich architectural legacy. The museum, which is owned by the city, is the historical heart of our city. It is itself a powerful example of preservation in action. Petaluma's 1906 Carnegie Library adapted and repurposed as the cultural anchor of historic downtown. But it takes all of us working together to continue protecting the places that make Petaluma so special, including our museum building. Like many treasures of Petaluma's built environment, including the historic riverfront trestle, historic preservation of the museum requires city and community investment. I encourage you all to prioritize the seismic retrofit of the museum as a critical part of our city's commitment to preserving and sharing Petaluma's incredible history and as a necessary step to ensure the safety of our community and the city's irreplaceable artifacts. National Historic Preservation Month is a great time to visit your museum. I invite all community members and our elected officials to join the museum and our partners for one of the many exciting events we have planned for May, including walking tours of historic downtown, an event at the Old Silk Mill, now the Hampton Inn, exploring heritage tourism on May 15, and a fun scavenger hunt organized in partnership with Catherine Reinhardt and the library. And that will be running through the end of the month. Right now, we're also celebrating 120 years since the cornerstone of our historic building was placed with a new exhibition highlighting the museum's role as a builder of community. We will also have a public celebration on June 9 with music, food, and entertainment, and I hope you can all join us then. Thank you again for your commitment to historic preservation. I look forward to working together with all of you to keep this historical heart we are also proud of beating strong.
And thank you very much. Also, we have Affordable Housing Month, and is Callum Weeks in the house? There you are. Please come on up for this. And whereas affordable housing is one of the cornerstones of democracy and our communities thrive when all members of our community have a place to call home. Whereas each year, thousands of Petaluma community members struggle to find affordable home in one of the most expensive housing markets in the nation. And whereas both the City of Petaluma's General Plan and housing elements support and encourage the development of affordable housing projects and programs, and the city is committed to safe, stable, and affordable housing for all its residents. And whereas the strength of the Petaluma community and economy depends on providing access to housing options that allow current and future residents of all income levels and ethnicities to live where they work. And whereas affordable housing near employment centers and transit reduces traffic congestion, air pollution, and emissions, and lowers housing and transportation costs for local workers. Whereas these organizations are encouraged to partner with local agencies and community members to recognize Affordable Housing Month, which supports the sharing of best practices, opportunities, and solutions to provide affordable housing that is the right of all individuals. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, proclaim May 2024 as Affordable Housing Month. Thank you.
Great resolution. I concur with all of that. Callum Weeks, Generation Housing. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for the privilege and honor of accepting this proclamation in recognition of Affordable Housing Month. As we all know, our communities continue to struggle from the dearth of affordable housing, not just here, not even in the region, statewide, throughout the entire country. And the confluence of economic factors is proving to be a mighty challenge for the Bay Area as a whole. But bold leadership, expansive policy changes, and a dollar here and there can definitely get us back on track. You know, homes are a fundamental need after all, a human right really, and everyone deserves to live affordably where they work, as the mayor noted in the proclamation. And without sufficient housing spanning the affordability spectrum, we can't really meaningfully address the climate change issue that we're confronted with. So this means more will need to change, and it's probably going to be a little uncomfortable. But it also might be beautiful, vibrant, and if we're lucky, a little bit more inclusive. So just, I want to take the opportunity again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Believe it or not, this might be a shocker, but this is my first proclamation I've ever accepted. And it's really great to be here and I really appreciate it. We know Petaluma is, you know, ready to be leaders. You guys have definitely demonstrated that. The community has made it clear that they want change. And so we're again just really thankful to be here, have this opportunity, and really look forward to continuing this partnership. So that, thank you so much.
Tonight, we have a presentation from our county library JPA with their annual report, and I'd like to invite the library director, Erica T. Bolden, to the podium to present for us.
I will start. I get to start first. I'm the lucky one here. Good evening, Mayor McDowell, City Council Meetings, and City Manager Flynn. Thank you for inviting us tonight. This is the Joint Powers Act it's listed as, but it's about our regional library system. And we have one of the best in the state, if not the nation. And I just want to point that out, right? And the city owns the building that is our library in Petaluma. So I just wanted to point those two things out before we start. So as your library commissioner, I'm here to start with a quick review of our excellent library and then tell you more about our regional library system. That Director Tibo will talk about that. Okay, so libraries are for everyone. That's what it says. Next slide, please. And you love your library. And we know that because July of last year, the library conducted a community survey, and the results indicated overwhelming support for the library countywide. Who doesn't love the library? I mean, really, you know? Among the things that residents thought were the most important aspects of the library service are listed here, some of them. One is having and keeping qualified librarians. We have a great staff. Also doing reading programs for children. Reading to a dog is my favorite. If you ever want to, if you have a kid, go and see that at our local library. Also homework help, career support, computer labs, safe places for children after school, clean, safe places are very important. Okay? So we're in the middle of conducting a second community survey to figure out if there was anything new between the last one and the one we're conducting. And we're going to have the results at the end of May? At the end of May. And this is going to help us as the library commissioners decide if we're going to go for another tax measure. Okay? Next slide, please. So reimagining the library. So we have a strategic plan, and we're calling it the Reimagining Plan. And it was finalized in 2021, and it guides our decisions of what we're doing with the library. Okay? Helping set our priorities in terms of program services and facility needs, as well as how they're funded. And we're making good progress toward our reimagining plan goals every year. Our plan is organized in three different areas, and you can see that on the slide, to provide opportunities to all to learn, contribute, interact, and participate, further community resiliency, foster racial equality, social justice, and inclusion for everyone. Next slide, please. So your library system is formed by the Joint Powers Agreement of the county and all nine cities, including unincorporated areas. Under the JPA, the cities in the county own the library buildings. And I know you're aware of that. You own the Petaluma library, the building itself. And what the library provides is staff, services, and supplies to operate the library. A countywide system allows us to provide over half a million digital resources, comprehensive interlibrary lending system, a mobile library van, and a lot more. We can provide economies of scale to our operations, and by partnering with you, we offer more expansive library services than you could provide if it was a city library itself. Okay? If it's a city department in the City of Petaluma. We have 16 locations that span the county. If you can read all that, there they all are. We have 11 regional libraries, one central library, two community libraries, three special collections, and a support center where library administration is housed with IT, collection services, facilities, and delivery. Next slide, please. So the Petaluma Regional Library averages 56 programs per month, and that was for the last six months. And it was open in 1976, so it's getting a little long in the tooth. It's getting a little old. That's why we're going to have our refresh plan here, which I'll talk about in the next slide. It's the second busiest branch in the entire library system. Our facilities master plan identifies a need for a second library in East Petaluma. And the City of Petaluma would need to provide a building or another space in order to make this happen, and we would really like to maybe start talks on that. I know you're not busy. You don't have a lot on your agenda, right? Let's add something else, you know? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so the renovation, refresh, modernization project, we've all used those names over the years. It's been a few years in coming, but the City of Petaluma is contributing 2.9 million towards the project. So we depend on you, the city, for the upkeep and to help with the refresh. And I understand we got a permit today. Is that, is that true? Okay, yay. Yay, so maybe the refresh may even start in July?
Early July.
Early July. I've been a library commissioner for a few years, and I've been here in July, January for four years, three years in the past, so I'm really happy that this is starting. Okay, so let's see. So what we'll be doing, it will be closed in July, hopefully, and we'll be operating a temporary library in the Kennelworth Teen Center, which is right next door to the library. And the staff will be doing extensive outreach while the library is closed. Diana Spalding, I want to introduce, is our branch manager here. Wonderful, wonderful branch manager. We're very lucky. And she'll be researching space at the fairgrounds for library advisory board meetings. So that's great. So thank you for supporting this renovation for the Petaluma library, and thanks to the city staff for helping with permits and planning. So now I'll turn it over to our director.
Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to meet you all. There we go. So now I'm going to share with you about the library system as a whole, now that we've talked about Petaluma. Next slide, please. So last year, we accomplished quite a number of things. The first one was the full implementation of Sunday hours. So this started in November of 2022 at all of our regional libraries. We're open 1 to 5. We've already seen a 320% increase in attendance on those days, so we know that families really love Sunday hours. We've also completed our facilities master plan, as Commissioner Heavenridge indicated. It's $200 million worth of facility upgrades. Now, that's not entirely the library's responsibility. As JPA partners, we share both in those costs. And as he indicated, the city is putting in 2.9 million for that modernization project, of which the library contributed 750,000 for matching funds. And some of that was through a grant that the city received from the state library. We also launched our fundraising campaign for the Roseland Regional Library, and I can tell you, at this time, we've raised 1.5 million of 3.6. The foundation is actually ahead of schedule, so we're hoping that we'll be able to, you know, raise the rest, you know, in time for the new library. We also completed an MOU with the county for library services at Juvenile Hall. This is actually a really amazing thing, that the county probation department was a strong supporter for this. They have, our agreement is 50/50, so they pay half the salary and we pay half the salary for a full-time librarian who splits their time between Juvenile Hall and Central Library in Santa Rosa. And this is actually 20 hours a week. Most counties only provide three to four hours a week of professional librarian service at their juvenile halls, so we far exceed the norm. So that's an amazing thing, and that librarian does collection development, he does programs, there's a longstanding book club at Juvenile Hall. So we're really happy that, you know, we have this partnership with the county. And then lastly, the Building Forward Together Grants, as I said, the city applied for the first round and received 1.8 million from the state for that. We also received funds for five of our other libraries. So total, we have received 5.5 million from the state for infrastructure grants for our libraries. Next slide, please. Last year was also a banner year in terms of circulation and attendance. Next slide. We had 1.2 million visitors last year. This was a 37% increase over the previous year, and that was during COVID, so, you know, we haven't quite gotten back to our pre-COVID levels, but we're very, very close. We also had onsite programming increased by 88%, and program attendance increased by 64%. So people are coming back to the library in droves, and that's a wonderful thing. Next slide, please. This is our circulation. As you can see from the bar chart, the blue is physical items and the orange is digital. We have actually exceeded all prior years. We reached 4 million items circulating last year, and this is an amazing feat. And that's partly because many other libraries in the state are still struggling to get back to their pre-pandemic hours and their pre-pandemic levels, and many are seeing their circulation decline over a period of 10 years, and ours is increasing, which just goes to show you how much people love the library. The other thing that's interesting is you'll see from 2015, our digital circulation was very small, and at this point in time, it's about 32% of our total circ, and that is an increase of 84%. And a lot of that was due to the pandemic because people learned how to use eBooks and download e-audio books, and that has just only increased over time. And this year, we're projecting that we will even increase our numbers from last year by 10%. Next slide, please. This is a chart showing our budget. So this year's budget is 51.3 million. The majority of that goes to people, which is our staff. That includes salary and benefits. The other remainder is resources, 14 million services and supplies. That's all those programs that we have, all of the books that we have in our libraries. And then places is our capital projects. That's 6.7 million of our budget this fiscal year. And this roughly translates into $89 per capita. If you were to operate this library independently, you could expect to pay between 3.5 and 4.5 million to operate your library, but you would not be able to provide the same level of service or the same number of resources that we are able to provide as a JPA. Next slide, please. Some of the things that we are able to provide as a result of our sales tax and property tax funds are over 600,000 physical items. These are books, DVDs, These are books, DVDs, audiobooks, as well as other items. So we share our library catalog with Lake County and Mendocino County libraries. So not only do you have access to our collections, but you also have access to theirs, and it's all free of charge. And we also operate a service called Link Plus. This is partly funded through sales tax and by the state library. It is a network of 70 libraries throughout the state where you can check out materials. So if you can't find something at your local branch, or even in our library catalog, we can get it from as far as San Diego, San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Rafael. It's especially useful for people who like rare items or niche items. My husband is a filmmaker and likes to check out really obscure, you know, German Expressionist films from the 1920s. He gets them from Link Plus. So it's a really great service. If you're not familiar with it, please look into it. Next slide, please. The other thing that we provide is our digital collections. As I said, this has grown exponentially. We have surpassed our Libby. So Libby is our main eBook platform, and we have surpassed 1 million checkouts two years in a row. We are actually number five in the state of California. There are 180 library jurisdictions in the state. We are number five. So that's an amazing feat that I love to tell people, and everywhere I go, people tell me how much they love Libby. We also have many other digital products, including Press Reader, which includes The Press Democrat, The Washington Post, The New York Times, as well as The Wall Street Journal. So if you like newspapers and you're a newspaper subscriber, I would check out Press Reader. And we have learning platforms such as LinkedIn Learning and Mango Languages, and then streaming services. So Canopy is our main movie streaming service, but we also have Hoopla, which is another streaming platform, The Shelf, which is our Spanish-language streaming service, and Freego, which is a music service that you can download music for free. So these are all available to you for free with your library card. Next slide, please. In addition to books, we also have what we call a library of things, and I just want to call attention to the state Parks Pass. This is one of the most popular programs in the state. Again, we are number five in the state of California for the Parks Pass. And what this is, is a parking pass, and you can check it out for three weeks. You can go to as many parks as you like within that timeframe. It's a very popular program statewide, and we also have backpacks that you can check out from your local libraries with trail guides. It has, I think it's called a bug box, where you can put a bug in this box and look at it up close. So all kinds of amazing things. Next slide, please. We also have really been increasing access to our libraries through technology, and these are some of the ways that we have done so. The first is our Bibliobox. The Petaluma Library does not have one currently. We will have one when the library reopens after the modernization. And it's a 24/7 book locker that you can go any time of the day. It's outside, so if you have holds and you don't want to wait for the library to open, you can have your items in the book locker, and you scan your library card, and the door opens, and as soon as you pull the books out, they are automatically checked out to you. We have them at, you know, seven of our libraries at this point. It's a very popular service. I use it. I'm one of those people who, I love the technology. And then we have laptop kiosks, and this is also something that all of our libraries currently have, with the exception of two. And these are for patrons to check out while they're in the library. So they can check out a laptop, they can go anywhere they like within the library, use it for two hours, and then bring it back. And then the other two featured is our mobile library vehicle. This goes to many locations throughout the county, including our underserved and remote areas, Bodega Bay, Monarillo, Casodaro, Geyserville, Glen Allen, Kenwood, as well as community stops, so festivals, schools, senior centers. And if you're interested in requesting it for any event, you can go to our website and do that there. And then lastly is our Chrome Kits, and these are Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots that people can check out and take home. And we have over 1,000 hotspots that we lend every week. It's one of our most popular products, and even with 1,000, we cannot keep up with the demand. Next slide, please. So this was a response to an article that I put in April in The Press Democrat that really, you know, warms my heart that people love the library. Our library was one of the very few institutions that improved during COVID. The increased access to electronic resources was huge. And I want to say that we have an amazing staff, and they're very professional and friendly, and they make everyone feel welcome and included in the library. And I'm grateful for their support and all of their hard work. Next slide. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. The library is just essential. Essential to our community. And I'd like to ask if any of our council members do have any questions before we move or comment. Please, council member now.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It's ironic that I grew up going to what is now our museum was my library as a child, also Janice's library, and in 1976, I was at the dedication of the new library.
Wow.
Which now has to be renovated, so to say about my age. Anyway, my question is, during the renovation, I mean, I have grandsons that we go and we request books that are very popular by the eight-year-old crowd, and how is that going to work? Is it going to be the mobile vans or the satellite library? How is that going to work? Because they've already asked me, and I said, I'll ask at the meeting.
So we will have a temporary location in the Kennelworth Teen Center that will have kind of a small curated collection of books with the most popular materials. The rest of the books will be stored at an offsite location, but we will be able to place holds on anything that your grandsons might want.
So we would just go and request it? It's probably so popular, it's not there, and then they email us when it comes in?
Mm-hmm.
And then what are the hours going to be at the new summer?
Same. Same hours.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, good to know. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Barnacle.
I actually don't have a question. I'm just really amazed by the rise in digital and just how you parlayed COVID into, you know, into really a win for the whole community. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shribs.
Again, thank you again for the digital. I know my wife loves to download things to her Kindle, and so she's got books all the time at home on her Kindle electronically from the library, because she's in about three or four different book clubs. But one of the things that you don't have that we might have access to maybe down the road here, every once in a while, I'll have some science research that needs to get done. And I know from the scholarly means of getting into science articles or history articles or things that are a little bit more college/university level, I've gone over to the JC, and they were nice enough to actually let me use their systems to get into the scientific literature, which is lots and lots of journals of all sorts of types. And that's not, I don't think we'd have, quite have that at our facility, or access to that. Do we have, down the road, can we have any cooperative agreements? So even on a computer basis, we could actually access this data basis through the JC? Or can we have an agreement that if anybody go over there, we can freely access it? They were just nice enough to let me do that.
Sure, we can certainly talk to the, you know, one of our commissioners is actually, Commissioner Legos works for the JC, and one of our former commissioners, Karen Schneider, was the dean of the library at SSU. So we can certainly, you know, have those discussions with them about that.
Yeah, because that's a huge service to a lot of folks, as we do for history or preservation or wetlands and the like, type of things that I was seeking at that time. So that would be just a nice little add-on when we really need to find out more detailed information of what's going on in those communities.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing this essential service to our community.
Thank you, Mayor McDonnell.
Okay, next up on our presentations, we have the presentation of our city draft fiscal year 2024/2025 budget book. And to help us with this, we have our finance director, Jesse Gooch.
Great. Thank you, Mayor McDonnell, and members of the city council. I'm really excited to be here this evening to deliver the fiscal year 2024/25 proposed budget to you and the community. Both the electronic and hard copy versions have been made available to you for your review. Thank you. Beautiful. So it's also available to the community on the City of Petaluma website at citypetaluma.org/city-budgets. So you can all go online and take a look. We have been working on this draft budget since late October and have created a comprehensive operating and capital improvement program budget document for you to review over the next couple of weeks. We will be back on Monday, May 20th, for the budget workshop, and we'll be going over the budget in detail at that time. We'll then return on June 3rd for the first reading and adoption of the budget ordinances, and then back again on June 17th for the second and final reading of the ordinances. So please let us know in the finance department here if you have any questions in the next two weeks, and we'll try to answer them either before or during the budget workshop on the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. We all have our homework in front of us, don't we? Public as well. Thank you very much. Let's see. Our next order of work for the evening on the agenda is our general public comment. During general public comment, the public is invited to comment on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction and that are not listed on the agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person, and depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. I'd like to invite our city clerk to read our messaging for the evening.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we received 16 public comments via email, and those are posted to the website. And at this time, I will start a 30-second clock up there for general public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker card to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments, and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of speakers and the viewers.
There we go. Okay, so let's see how many cards we have from our in-the-room participants who wish We have six cards tonight, and so that means that each person has a maximum of three minutes to speak. Do not feel any obligation to speak. If your message is strong and succinct, it's probably more powerful. So tonight, we have Catherine Babowski to be followed by Elaine Stivik.
Yes, my name is Catherine Babowski. I live at the Littlewoods Villamo Park. Harmony and Waterhouse has been charging the residents property tax for the land each month, and it's like $663. A total a year is $6,205.68. And the past 30 years, that's over $3,2,3900 a year, over 30 years. And they're charging us also, too, two water latility bills this month. That's also against law. And they're charging us $53.70 a month. That's total 50,263.20 dollars a year. And they're charging us over, their basic rent is like $711. And some of the residents are paying over $9,640.82 a year at rent. And this Waterhouse does not, is not paying taxes on the land at all. So the residents are paying the tax for the land. We're paying our mobile home tax, and we're paying the property tax of the land. Waterhouse is not paying nothing. Zero. Nothing. Since we're paying the tax on the land, then residents should own the land, own the property, not Harmony, not Waterhouse. And also, too, the cops are not protecting the community. There's a guy that's been stalking my place, peeking in my window at night, and the cops don't even respond. So I've got the evidence right here.
Thank you. Elaine Stivik to be followed by Nicola Fry.
Good evening, Mayor McDonnell, members of the city council, and city staff. My name is Elaine Stivik, and I'm vice president of the Petaluma Women's Club. And as such, I'm also representing the Time to Tressle Civic Engagement Project of the Women's Club that we have at the present time. Here I have 49 letters from the Women's Club members, signed and given to you to go on record, in support of rehabilitation of the downtown tressle, which definitely represents historic preservation, as we had discussed tonight. In addition, we have collected hundreds of signatures on petitions to produce, to make evidence of our support and the community's support for rehabilitation of the tressle. We especially want to convey our support of the city seeking funding for the project, start up within this fiscal year, if possible. And we would love to have a motion to bring the funding of this project up to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicola Fry to be followed by Sandra Shan.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, and city attorney. My name is Nicola Fry, and I'm the chair of the Petaluma Senior Advisory Committee. I'd like to address an issue that was first brought forth at your city council meeting on Monday, January 8th, 2024, and readdressed in a written public comment on April 8th regarding the question that concerns our requested clarification of a city council liaison for the senior advisory committee. At the January meeting after discussion, the city attorney, Dan Lee, commented that he saw no reason for not having a liaison to the SAC, but that he would want to research the specifics based upon the requirements of being a charter city and the fact that enabling legislation must include the direction of the council regarding this matter. He also said that he would return to the council with the information at the next meeting, and that the council would, of course, could, of course, set committees as they desire. The current sitting members of the senior advisory committee have unanimously voted to formally request a city council liaison, and that I bring this issue back to the city council tonight. I understand that several years ago, when this issue was brought forth, the SAC was informed that there was a concern about staff time and budget. For your general information, the SAC agenda is created in cooperation by Ia. Joseph Menard and myself. Our minutes are taken and transcribed by Patricia Souza, an SAC member, and we do not utilize this chamber and the costs associated with bandwidth for transmission or recording. What we are requesting is approximately one hour of time for a council member to attend our monthly meeting and to become a champion for Petaluma seniors. Since January 8th, when I initially requested a city council liaison, the SAC has been contacted by several city council members who have stated that they would be happy to be the council liaison, but we are still all awaiting a decision. We, the senior advisory committee, await your response. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandra Shan to be followed by Margot Cellarrio.
While teaching at Sonoma State, I was deeply influenced by an emeritus sociology professor who inspired me to do the work I do, the reason I'm here today. Dr. John Steiner was a highly regarded Holocaust scholar, a survivor of Auschwitz and Dachau, and a founder of the Center for the Study of the Holocaust and Genocide. The center remains dedicated to teaching ethical and moral behavior relating to human rights violations, and challenges us to face the difficult subject of human destructiveness and to reflect on individual accountability, the necessity of individual and community action to prevent genocide in the world. Dr. Steiner and I would walk together across campus, talking about his research. After the war, he traveled the world interviewing former concentration camp guards, SS, and Nazi officials, searching for what in their character made it possible to enact such violence on other human beings. He told me the scariest thing was that they did not seem like monsters in daily life, but pretty ordinary people until they were. but pretty ordinary people until they were swept up by their fears and biases, dehumanizing another group of people. He told me we all have evil in us if we shut out other opinions and let a passionate fervor overwhelm our moral values. Once we stood together in a campus crowd that was calling for bombing Iraq, many wearing American flag pens, some using Muslim slurs. He said he recognized that kind of intensity, only last time the crowd was wearing little swastikas. I continue to honor Dr. Steiner's memory, and contrary to what an anti-ceasefire speaker told me, I do not believe that any group of people can be accurately stereotyped as good or as evil. He taught me that we all have good and evil within us and must be judged by our actions, and it's our responsibility to speak up against genocide anywhere in the world. So I'm here again, representing many grieving Petalumans who are hoping you can see the wisdom of saving lives on both sides by calling for lasting peace in Israel-Palestine and human rights for all people.
Thank you. Margot Celario to be followed by Ashmi Chokshi.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Marcos Celario. I live in the Riverfront Community, which, for those of you that are not familiar with it, that newly developed neighborhood sits at the end of Coffield Street where it meets the Petaluma River. We, in order to access this neighborhood, we must drive or walk through the narrow portion of Hopper Street, which is so narrow that it doesn't really allow for two travel lanes. And on a daily basis, we encounter litter on the road, stolen supermarket carts, full of the belongings of the people that attend meal service at the Mary Isaac Center. We are very aware of the role of Mary Isaacs for the unhoused community in Petaluma. We are very aware that they have residents that live there, but the meal service that is provided three times a day to the non-residents really attract a lot of transient population that in order to obtain these services and for convenience, they just stay loitering on the street and sidewalk. Also, it's worth noting that that narrow street, when the area was developed, they proposed big planters to embellish basically a very commerce, like a very industrial part of the road, and those big planters really pose visibility. You know, it's a hazard because people really sit on the curb, behind those planters, stand up and walk directly on the street. And if you ever tend to walk on that sidewalk, there's a lot of litter on the sidewalk itself. There's urination, defecation. We have found pills just lying there on the curb, needles. And we walk in and out of the neighborhood with our kids. We don't want to feel gridlocked there. We walk out, we bike out, and I really can't allow my kids to walk out of the neighborhood or ride their bikes to their friends' houses, you know, that live nearby. And it's also worth noting that the development that was planned next to us, it was called the Scannell Development, was already transferred, and it's going to become a big public park, which we are worried of the population just transferring there. We are very lucky that Petaluma Police Department is fully engaged in removing encampments when they happen. We have encampments usually happening under the freeway on the underpass, and also on the area of the Riverside Development that now got delayed. And that area usually tends to pop up there, and Petaluma Police Department really engages with the other agencies to get that removed. But it is my role here to bring to your attention and hopefully work with the Mary Isaac Center to please not provide meal service to their non-residents at this location and provide it elsewhere in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker for the evening is Ashmi Chokshi.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. My name is Ashmi Chokshi. I am Marcos' neighbor from Riverfront, and I guess that's in District 6. In fact, today is my second, two years completed in Petaluma, and I am so happy in our engaged, friendly community. I want to specifically thank the police department, who has made our new neighborhood feel so safe. I've emailed my comments, I will not repeat all of it. I want to give you three examples. Today, at about 1:00 PM, I was driving home from a doctor's appointment with my mother, witnessed a large truck blocking the same single entry and exit we have, basically what looked like a prohibited substances distribution happening right there. We could not go into our own neighborhood. A few weeks ago, I have a neighbor, I'll call that person D, who had a very scary incident. They were trying to drive out of the neighborhood to the gas station that is right outside. Was, you know, there was somebody blocking, you know, yelling, et cetera. They tried to go past them safely. This person followed them into the gas station, threatened them, and basically said things like, "I know where you live, I will not be that nice next time." Another example I will give you is I was passing by, same situation, another person who was perhaps under the influence or somehow not in control of their faculties, with a shopping cart full of their belongings, yelling and ranting. I waited, then tried to safely go past them. They got really mad at me and started throwing things and pushed their shopping cart. I had to accelerate to avoid damage to my mother's new car. I can go on. Many of these are incidents the police department has been wonderful to help us with, and most of these individuals, from what we have been able to gather, are the non-residents who accept the boxed meal service from Mary Isaac Center. A fantastic community service. If I were ever on that side of the street, I hope it's there for me. But the location with our residents and the only road in and out is extremely bad. These folks are just in the street, they hang out with their legs in the street. Again, that's their living room, that's what they're going to do, but it's very dangerous for them because there are cars going in and out, there are construction vehicles because our area is under construction. So for all those purposes, we really request you to please help us figure out, we do not know who else to address in this regard, to please relocate the non-resident boxed meal service. It's a boxed meal service, it can be distributed from many locations. If there's any way to move this away from the only road and sidewalk in and out of our neighborhood, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that was our last speaker on general public comment tonight. So in closing, general public comment, bringing it back up to the council for council comment. And I'd like to invite our vice mayor to start us off with activities of his past week.
Okay. So I've participated in, there was several events in the last few weeks, committees, workshops, webinars, and in all of them, almost all, the majority of them, in fact, almost all of them, we're dealing with climate change and adaptation and what we can do about it as the main topic. And I've also read, there's lots of reports in the newspaper, magazines, about this area. So I'm going to report out on those findings, because there's so much of it, at the Climate Commission, so please listen in there. But basically, the summary is that it's happening faster and stronger than predicted, and we need to adapt, is a strong term, but we want to adapt strongly to the climate change that is happening, as well as reducing our carbon emissions and footprint that we have in our blueprint. One example, just to like raise the awareness, a little bit of what's coming. A few weeks ago, I did say I was looking forward into the future and thinking about it, and that maybe cars might be going away. So I was being a bit dramatic when I said this, but here's the point. Our carbon reduction blueprint says that even our very aggressive action plan will not get us all the way to carbon neutrality. That's not even considering carbon footprint, that's just carbon emissions reduction. And even though it's going to include, right now, a 50% replacement of local single occupancy car trips with active transportation trips, so that's part of our blueprint that we need to get out of our cars. Secondly, a lot of what's not being talked about, I just opened up Google, did a little searching, I've looked at it before many times, but currently, our U.S. Department of Energy is saying that the current rate of consumption, which is increasing each year, both in the U.S. and globally, that oil is going to be running out in less than 50 years. So we'll have liquid gas for less than 50 years, and then it's gone. That's what our department says. So fossil fuels, they're finite resource, it took millions of years to create in geologic time, and each year, we are using up over a million years of worth of Earth history in our consumptions. And then in combination with climate change consequences, and then the loss of finite liquid fossil fuel, so this is going to lead us to a massive change in our transportation system within 25 years. So this is sort of like the predictions, that's what's coming. And of course, that also means with everything else, that within 50 years, our children are going to be living in a very different world than we are right now. So that's just to raise awareness of what we're doing here with climate change actions is absolutely essential, along with everyone else. And there's huge numbers of people that are looking at adaptation, as well as carbon emission reduction. So we need to do all of this to make this all work. But I'll give a full report on all the, my findings from the last few weeks there at the Climate Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kate Thompson.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to ask the council if we could have a conversation, obviously not tonight, but rearrange the council priority. I'm requesting that we address the parking ordinance. The cannabis ordinance that we have that we're going to expand, I believe, can wait because we already supported a cannabis ordinance, and if we bring the parking ordinance forward before that, I'm asking the council for support. I've spoken with councilmember Healy, and he's in support of this. We've talked about it, and so I'm just going to leave it at that for a conversation later. I had my planning commission meetings, but also I'm on a subcommittee with the Planning Commission of three of us for a general plan, and we meet weekly, and it's actually really productive, you know, being with three people. I'm with Roger and Darren, and they're great to work with. And so I'm really looking forward, you know, as we move on with the general plan process, because it's really interesting when you're sitting there and actually just having a conversation, and, you know, all three of us are educating each other, but it's really collaborative, and so I'm pretty pleased with that. Last Friday, I went out to the Coast Guard Base, which has been part of Petaluma since like 1942, started off as the, it was an army base, and now it's a Coast Guard Base, but I was on their rib, they do a rib cook-off every year, and I was a judge. And this is the second year I did that, and it's just really enjoyable going out there. They have a large electrification going on right now that hopefully in November will be completed. There's been a few problems because of the wind, but it should be a really good project. It will keep the base going for 10 days, and also people in the rural area can come in case of emergencies, and so it's going to be quite an upgrade. Other things I do want to talk about, COTS, Riverfront, I mean, it is a real issue, and I happen to be riding my bike down there today and passed, you know, COTS and, you know, people standing out there, and I would like to address, is there a way that, you know, if the box lunches are a real, are the issue? There's multiple issues, I understand. Maybe we could look into doing something, at least, I think we could be a little bit more creative, because this is really a big impact in the neighborhood, and it's not about being next to COTS, but it's about being able to drive in safely, walk, bike, and feel safe in your neighborhood. And yesterday, I rode all around on the east side, just in my district, which actually goes underneath the freeway, talked to a lot of people, and I have to say, it's really nice to talk to people on the east side, they seem to be very happy, and very few complaints. Actually, there were no complaints, it was just great conversations. And what I do is I get on my bike, and I see somebody, and I always have a card in my pocket, and I stop and ask, introduce myself and ask questions, and you really learn a lot by just pausing and asking people. And, thank you, the east side, great people. As a matter of fact, I mean, somebody that I met, they have a child with special needs, and they didn't know about the Miracle Field. And so, you know, so you gave people a lot of really good information. And every time I see Nicole, I always think of the bathrooms in downtown, so that will be in the budget discussion next time around. And I think that's about it for my comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have been busy in the last week. I had a joint pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee meeting with transit, where we reviewed the general plan transportation framework. Most exciting was the Sonoma Clean Power Board meeting. We had our 10-year anniversary. Just going to read off a few things. I had a chance to cheers with Dave King, former council member, but we, a couple, Sonoma Clean Power was the second community choice aggregator to form in the state. Since then, we were up to 25 CCAs, serving over half the state, 14 million Californians, and we built 14 million, or 14,000 megawatts of clean energy. From 2014 to 2020, we offered rates that were below PG&E, and then we had a small break, and for the last three years, we've been below, 7% below PG&E's electric rates. When we approved the budget, there was a little line I have been there that said that we've delivered over $100 million in bill savings over the last two years to Sonoma County residents compared to what they would have paid if they were on PG&E's rates. Just in going for the next two years, we're going to be pouring $60 million into additional bill savings going forward. To councilmember Shribbs' point about climate change, Sonoma Clean Power has resulted in 75% reduction in emissions from electricity, and overall, a 9% reduction in emissions from the countywide. Truly, just amazing impacts on so many different fronts, economics, you know, emissions, all of it. Let's see. I was busy this weekend and went to Scholenberger Park, caught up with some folks that were taking pictures out there across from where the Dutra asphalt plant is, has been proposed, and then shot over to the monster trucks, and was reminded about why I love the racetrack, and got to see the best of both worlds there, Petaluma. And then, coming up this week, there's no shortage of things to do on, just going to name two days, May 8th, Walk and Roll to School Day, which will be taking place, starting at a couple of different destinations, going to school, so please drive safe on your way to school this week. There's going to be kids on their bikes and walking and whatnot, a lot more of them than usual. May 8th, at Casa Grande High School from 6:00 to 8:00 is an ARCAN training, so if you want to get up to speed on that, go over there. And at 7:00 PM on May 8th, there is a Know Before You Grow with Strong Towns founder Chuck Marone on housing. And then finally, coming up this weekend, May 11th, there is Plan Fest at the Petaluma Fairgrounds from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So buckle up, there's no shortage of things to do in Petaluma.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the last two weeks have been very busy. I listened to four long days via Zoom of the five-day arbitration for Littlewoods Mobile Home Park. The arbitration decision will be made in next, hopefully, 21 days or so. I attended an Earth Day event, the Meere Woods Teen Treatment Facility Open House at their newest location in Petaluma. It's on Thompson Lane out in the country. It's a beautiful facility, and we're very lucky to have them in our community and help our teens. The Downtown Antique Fair was well-attended, and we could have done without the wind, but I was able to purchase a lot of things and see a lot of friends and see a lot of people that I didn't know that were visiting Petaluma, and spoke to them about why they came to our antique fair. I was at the presentation at the Petaluma Museum by Urban Chat, presented by Dan Zach, which was very, very informative, and I was very proud of our city staff for being there and for bringing this forward to the community. At both my liaison committees, airport and park and rec committees, we had meetings regarding the frameworks of the general plan. So if you haven't looked at So if you haven't looked at the frameworks, jump on our city website and check those out. We had like a lot of conversation and I even explained what these posters behind us mean. May events for Petaluma, you need to go out to the airport on May 18th. Third Saturday of the month is our display day. And then that afternoon, shoot over to downtown for our salute to American graffiti. And you can see classic cars of yesteryear and they'll be cruising the boulevard just like they did in the movie. The Cool Petaluma Local Resource Expo will be held on May 21st at our fairgrounds. Our Living History Day will be out at the Petaluma Adobe on May 25th from 10:00 to 4:00. And this is something I am very happy that I participated back in the 1980s and I lobbied to keep that park open for our public because the state fens were drying up and they were going to close our Petaluma State Historic Park. So I dressed my kids up and I dragged them out to that park and I fought with the leadership of the state to keep that park open. So I'm happy it's still going in 2024. I'm wishing all our Petaluma mothers a wonderful Mother's Day on Sunday. And to the community park residents who spoke, that area is very close to my home. And I travel that Caulfield into that residency neighborhood a lot because I'm checking on that community park to see when it's going to be open. And I take my grandsons over to that park and to In-N-Out Burger. It's not the healthiest food, but it's their choice after baseball. And I do get stopped very frequently by the unhoused population. And I hope that we can find a solution within staff and COTS to find a solution soon so that maybe the box meals can be passed out in a different location and clear up that neighborhood for potential future problems. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Posecke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel compelled to mention the conference I went to at the Petaluma campus of Santa Rosa Junior College last Friday, which was, it's called We the Future. It's a social justice conference that they've been doing yearly for seven years. And the keynote speaker, whose name was Cesar Cruz, I had not, was not familiar with him ahead of time. He spent most of his career in education and studying how best to educate people of color who were, you know, having difficulties in school, in our schools. And he, I hesitate to call it a lecture, but I can't think of a better word. It was far beyond a lecture. In fact, it was the, it was just simply the best, the best thing resembling a class or lecture that I've ever attended. It lasted an hour and 40 minutes, which is usually than they let keynote speakers speak for. And everyone was just totally engaged. And so if you run across that name, Cesar Cruz, he's written some books and he's a great lecturer and you shouldn't miss a chance to hear him talk. Secondly, I invite the folks who are here about Hopper Street to contact me through my city email as well. I am the, our representative on the County Homeless Coalition and I will be speaking myself to the people at COTS about this and to see what, if we can come up with any kind of a solution. Lastly, while I'm responding to talks, I need to say again that I remain in full support of every effort to, for a ceasefire in the Middle East. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In the past couple of weeks since our last meeting, the highlight, probably one of the highlights for me was the city manager and myself gave a State of the City presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. And one of my comments, one of the many things we're asked about was the biggest project that the city is undertaking right now is the general plan update. And you wouldn't think of it as a project, but it's really important that everyone engage now because we set the course now for the next 20 years. And so I was glad to hear Councilmember Barnacle mention Plan Fest. In addition to that, I also attended Muir Woods Health Residential Facilities for Teens, as mentioned. And it's a really valuable thing in our community that we can have this service for teens. I attended Relief Volunteer Appreciation Day with several other council members. There are over 1,500 trees now planted and just a stellar organization in our community. I attended the Petaluma City School Climate Interns presentations, end-of-year presentations with numerous council members. And it's just fun to see that what the youth are up to in the community. Were able to help at COTS's fundraiser over this past week. And if we want the COTS to be stronger, we need to help them financially be stronger. I was able to attend San Antonio High School's and Valley Oak School. Their piece pole installation is done by a veterans organization and Rotary that are working throughout the county. They have over 50 poles installed at this point. And then I also was able to attend their presentation for the McKinley School Piece Pole. The Arbor Day Prince Park Work Day, I got quite a bit done and a variety of council members were all there at that. And then definitely want to congratulate Petaluma on another very successful Butter and Eggs Day event. So with that, I'd like to toss it over to our city manager for her comments and report.
Thank you, Mayor, council and community. Before I get into the litany of things that we have upcoming here in our city, I wanted to make sure that I responded to the Riverfront neighbors that have come out and also provided us with public comment. We are aware of the concerns and we are working very closely with COTS, our housing manager and our police department to come up with a lasting solution. It's kind of been touch and go. And so we hear you, we understand, and we're on top of that. And I'm going to ask City Attorney Danley if he wants to respond to Nicola's comment about the senior advisory committee enabling legislation.
Yes, I'd be happy to, City Manager Flynn. And also, I can also respond briefly to Councilmember Kater Thompson's suggestion about council priorities. So with respect to the senior advisory committee, its current enabling legislation, it looks like it was adopted on August 3 of 2015. It does not provide for a council liaison. It's completely, the council's prerogative. If they'd like to add that requirement, they can easily amend their legislation to do that. The reason why that would be necessary though is because in, as I've mentioned before, for general law cities, they're unable to have city council members essentially reporting themselves by serving on the council and also serving on a subordinate body of the council. But because of our charter city status, we can do that and provide for what otherwise would be incompatible offices. So that's a council choice. We could return and the council could direct that change in the senior advisory committee, which is established by resolution and amending the resolution just requires a resolution. So it could be, could happen under single meeting if that's the council's direction. And I would leave it to the city manager to address whether that would have staffing resource implications. But it's already a supportive committee, so presumably not great ones. And just very briefly in response to Councilmember Kater Thompson's mentioning of a desire to bring back a discussion to perhaps swap the cannabis priority or part of it for parking regulations. I just want, well, first of all, the priorities are set by the council. It's their priority to change them, so fully respect that. But as a reminder, we are doing, literally, I was actually spending most of my day-to-day working on getting ready the necessary zoning amendment in accordance with the council's current direction on cannabis regulations to permit onsite cannabis retail sales. That will be done pretty soon. We're on a very short timetable to get that ready. It'll actually be, those regulations will really proceed the first quarter that they're slated to have it in. So they'll be done ahead of time. And the more expansive cannabis regulations, which currently the council has targeted for the second, the next fiscal year, are going to be a sizable project. And that's something that could, if the council wished, it could replace with something else. But currently that would be in year two. And then my caution would be, we are, we are, it is, it is going to be a big lift to complete the current fiscal year priorities for not just my office, but all the offices. So if there's going to be a shift in this year, we're probably going to have to, you know, look at some zero-sum kind of adjustments. Just my brief feedback, but respectfully said in terms of the council's prerogative to direct us in that way. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. So just get out your calendars if you haven't been taking score. As Councilmember Barnacle mentioned, May is Bike Month. On Wednesday, May 8th, Cool Petaluma is helping organize a family bike rally at Wickersham Park from 7:30, 8:00 AM, which will serve as a meetup spot for several different bike trains of volunteer parents assembling these bike trains to help get kids get to school safely. On Thursday, May 16th, is Bike to Work Day and the city is hosting an Energizer station during the morning commute hours at our community center on Lynch Creek Trail. Additional Energizer stations can be found at the Downtown Smart Station, Keller Street Cowork and Walnut Park. So go to bikesonoma.org for more information. And later that afternoon, we'll host our monthly Safe to Route Schools Task Force meeting at Meawak Elementary at 4:00 PM to discuss efforts to improve and encourage walking and bicycling around the Meawak Elementary School campus. This Saturday, as Councilmember Barnacle mentioned, we have our General Plan Fest Open House from 9:00 to 2:00 at the fairgrounds. There will be tacos and prizes in addition to learning all about our general plan and what that encompasses. Other upcoming community workshops includes the Lucese Gate Park, which is Wednesday, May 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center. The 101 Bike Ped Crossing Study, which is Wednesday, May 29th at 6:00 PM in council chambers. And the Caulfield Bridge Neighborhood Meeting, Thursday, May 30th at 6:00 PM, locations TBD. But all of that will be found on our website and appreciate your engagement. And thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnacle?
It's free tacos.
Who's going to pass that up, right? Yes, free tacos and prizes.
7:30 Wednesday morning.
And Mayor, yes, and I forgot, one other thing is this Wednesday, we kick off our annual recruitment for vacancies on our city committees and commissions. And that, we're encouraging folks with a diverse range of experience and encourage all to apply. Applications will be available on the city website and are due by 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 6th. And appointments are made by the city council on June 17th for terms beginning July 1st. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that one up. It's so, so important that we get those volunteers to staff every committee. I mean, are there 22 different committees or 23 different committees? And, you know, some stay on, but there's always one or two openings. And it's very important that we do get quality people to sign up to help your government work the way you want it to work. So tell a friend. And with that, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is the consent calendar for the evening. And I'm looking up and down the dais to see if anybody has an item they wish to pull separately or an item they have a question on and not seeing any. I'm going to open public comment and ask our clerk to run our public comment on the consent calendar.
Absolutely. We did not receive any ahead of time, but I'll read the instructions in case anyone has any now. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dais will be reset for each speaker. We do have one speaker card.
Thank you. And that's our timer. And so we'll go to reading the speakers. And our, first, our only speaker is Ashmi Choksky.
Thank you for the opportunity. I won't take the full time. This is more informational than anything in support. You guys are more qualified to decide this. But this is for agenda item, I believe, six for the riverscape delay. Our request here, just based on all the things we've been talking about, is, you know, it looks like the developer is expecting several years of delay in the completion, according to their letter. Understandable, the market is what it is. But if they can please, you know, if we can request them somehow to maintain the property because so far it's been, the weeds grow up to five feet tall, there's hidden encampments, there's fire risk there. There's no fencing or no trespassing or any of that. So if there's any way to require that they maintain the property for fire risk and reducing encampments and also, or maybe make it a neighborhood facility of some kind until they build. So you folks can help us get creative, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. That's our last speaker. That closes public comment. I'll bring it back up here to the dais. And I'll ask staff if there's a response to that about what the maintenance level or community aesthetic need be during a delay.
Well, I would just, Eric, if you want to weigh in, but I would just say that we've got code enforcement. I mean, they have to maintain their property. They have, they cannot, they cannot let weeds grow on the property. And we'll be making sure that that occurs.
Right. And we also have the weed abatement program that Fiber Prevention runs and so.
And as far as encampments, we work really closely with private property owners as soon as that starts to crop up. So we keep a pretty close eye on that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
On this, this extension, it's a one-year extension? It's one confirmation. That's what I read earlier. So it's just one year. And I would appreciate just following through for the neighborhood, you know, for fire risk and stuff. And I know that the police, you know, we're working close with the homeless, but we'll work on that more.
And I've got Director O. Brian, if you just want to make sure that we make a note to circle back with the developer and make sure that the property is taken care of.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then looking up and down the council for other comments.
I just wanted to make a comment on number five and it's more of a thank you to Drake for his fantastic leadership with Rebuilding Together.
It is amazing how many different iterations affordable housing has been over our efforts to do it and how some have gotten away from us. The early versions had flaws that let them skip out of housing. And this, keeping these houses in our affordable pool is so key. So that's what that item is about. And with no further comment.
We'll make the motion.
And do we have a, so we have a motion by Kater Thompson, a second by Barnacle and a roll call vote, please?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Kater Thompson?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posecke?
Yes.
Shribbs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now, moving to our workshop for the evening to review and provide feedback on the Howard Street Improvement Projects, I'm going to allow our Vice Mayor, John Shribbs, to carry this item as I live in the area and need to recuse from all items regarding this. So thank you very much. Call me when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. We do have a staff presentation. This is not for a decision by council tonight, but just basically for feedback back to the staff about the Howard Street and the restructuring that's going to be happening there. So if you could go ahead and, it'll be presented by Bijorn Grievenberg, our, the project manager, who does a lot of our roadwork, is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good evening, council members and community members. Tonight, I'm very excited to share with you, well, introduce you, the council, to this project and share what we've heard from our community so far and get your feedback early in the design process as we move toward construction of this project, hopefully next year. So the Howard Street Improvements Project will upgrade sewer and water utilities, which are aging and undersized, along Howard Street from A Street to West Street. And obviously, we like to take these opportunities to And obviously, we like to take these opportunities to also address pavement quality and improve safety and accessibility, really to minimize disruption to the community, reduce our construction costs, and ensure the longevity of the pavement surface. And this project was identified as a priority for all of this work due to the fact that it has those aging and undersized utilities I mentioned. The roadway surface is failed, and obviously, it is, it has a role in our community as a connector roadway that links people with schools, parks, churches, and the downtown So, some of the existing conditions that you'll find out on Howard Street today, badly cracked pavement, absence of curb ramps at many of our corners, crosswalks and intersections. You can see a couple of examples there in the middle, two images with a storm drain right in the middle of a crosswalk, and then on the right, a culvert that connects the street to the sidewalk, a narrow culvert there. And then we also see a lot of opportunities shown in the right image there at the Liberty Street intersection to kind of tighten up the roadway, eliminate some of the paved surface, make a more pedestrian-friendly environment, and in doing so, improve safety, accessibility, and reduce vehicle speeds. And I'll just acknowledge too that today Nicola Fry, who's here tonight, sent in a letter with a lot of great images capturing the existing conditions along the corridor and a lot of, and really captured a lot of the challenges we see out there, especially with respect to accessibility with just really poor sidewalk conditions and pavement So, we began the planning work for this project in 2023. We're now, this year, we've moved into community engagement and design. We've got some early design work completed, and really, we're looking at tonight as an opportunity to move towards more, get your feedback as well as the communities, and then move towards detailed design. And our goal is to construct this project next year and do our best to concentrate the most disruptive construction activities, obviously, in the summer to avoid impacts on the schools in the area. So, as I mentioned, we've been, we've spent the last few months engaging the community. We've held three community meetings so far, right here in council chambers, that have been attended by a total of 75 people. And looking around, I see several familiar faces tonight. And those have been really, really helpful meetings. We've, it's been a very, a nice kind of casual discussion where we present on the project, and we've had really good feedback from folks who know this street really well and a lot of folks who live on or near Howard Street who we're hearing from. And we've also held an online survey, which received over 100 responses, many of which were extremely detailed and helpful. And we also presented this project to our pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee. All of our noticing has included postcards to folks along and near the project corridor. We've sent emails to people who've signed up for updates on our project webpage. And for tonight's meeting and our last community workshop, we also left door hangers on the properties along Liberty Street, given the potential for pretty significant changes there. And I'll get into that a little bit more shortly. And I'm just looking to see any more notes here. Oh, and so, I've got TBD there, following tonight's meeting. We are open to feedback from the community and council on what type of engagement they would like to see us use for the remainder of this project. One of the things we have identified where we will likely have several follow-ups with the community is on the Liberty Street intersection, given the potential for significant changes there. So, just distilling all of the great feedback we've received to date into a few bullet points here, we've gotten lots of feedback, obviously, about improving the conditions at intersections along the corridor, with the top priorities from the community being the Bodega Avenue, Washington Street signalized intersection, the Western Avenue intersection, the Bassett Street crosswalks and intersection, and also the Liberty Street intersection. We've heard about the need to improve accessibility and pedestrian safety throughout the corridor as well as bicycling. We've also heard several comments about slowing traffic, particularly on the stretch between A Street and Bodega Avenue. We've heard some desire to address spillover parking associated with St. Vincent's Elementary School. You've got St. Vincent's Church. Now, we've got some more commercial activity on the corridor with Crooked Goat Brewing and Acme Burger, and so, we've had discussions about that. And really, really though, that will most likely be addressed through our downtown area parking management plan, which is also set to launch very shortly. And we've also heard a lot about the importance of this corridor's historic elements and aesthetics. This is a street where you have cobblestone curb and gutter in many locations, which we always do our best to preserve on these paving projects. And this project does actually serve and go through two designated historic districts with both the A Street Historic District and Oak Hill Brewster Historic District. So, next, I'm just going to walk through at a very high level some of the design elements that we are looking at for the corridor, and this slide will look familiar, same format as what we've used for other recent roadway projects. So, at the bottom of the screen there, you will see a, just a conceptual diagram that tries to simplify the corridor and show you where these improvements are proposed using cross streets for reference. So, we are looking at providing bulbouts, which slow traffic, shorten the pedestrian crossing distance, and improve visibility throughout the corridor, especially at all of the stop-controlled and uncontrolled crosswalks. So, those are at Kent Street, Oak Street, Prospect Street, Union Street, Harris Street, Western Avenue, Bassett Street, and Liberty Street. And I'll also note that we have a few new crosswalks proposed as part of this project, those being Kent Street, linking people to the Dog Park entrance at Oak Hill Park. Harris Street, which will divide the lengthy stretch. Right now, it's a pretty long stretch from Bodega Avenue, the crosswalk at Bodega Avenue, down to the crosswalk at Western Avenue. So, a new crosswalk at Harris Street would cut that segment in half and provides better pedestrian circulation. And then we also are recommending actually removing the crosswalk at A Street and moving it a little bit, a little ways north. And again, I'll show a more detailed diagram of that shortly. We're also looking at adding median refuge islands to add an additional layer of safety and traffic calming at our uncontrolled crosswalks. These are the crosswalks that do not have stop signs or signals, and those are, again, at Kent Street, Union Street, right by St. Vincent's Elementary School, Harris Street, that new crosswalk I just mentioned, the Bassett Street intersection, right in front of the church, and then the new crosswalk at Liberty Street. So, Howard Street is fairly wide. We have room, actually, if we, just by simply narrowing the existing travel lanes out there, we have room to add a bike lane in one direction. So, we are proposing adding an uphill buffered bike lane in the, and we recommend doing that in the northbound uphill direction, because that's where the speed differential is greater, obviously, between people bicycling and driving. So, that's where you want to prioritize having dedicated space for people to bike. And so, in the uphill direction, that would take you from A Street up to Oak Street, and then that's the crest of the hill at Oak Street, and it switches directions there, and it actually runs in the other direction from a little ways north of Gallon Street up to Oak Street. So, southbound from Gallon to Oak, northbound from A to Liberty. And the expectation in the downhill direction, then, is that if you're biking, you're taking the lane, and that is much easier to do and much safer to do on downhills, because you're moving much faster. Then looking at signal improvements at the Bodega/Washington intersection. We looked at this very closely. It is an interesting intersection because of the skewed angles. You can see that it's not exactly a clean perpendicular intersection, and we, our goal was actually to provide a dedicated left turn lane and add a left turn signal here, because right now, what happens for opposing left-turning vehicles on Howard Street, they can't clear each other simultaneously, and they have to, one direction has to yield to the other, basically. So, we looked at that very closely. We could not make it work with the challenging geometry here, adding a left turn lane. So, what we are going to do instead is create a split signal phase. So, this means all of the northbound traffic will go at once, and then while southbound traffic has a red, and then it'll switch direction. Southbound will go while northbound has a red, so that we'll no longer share a green We've also already gotten place leading pedestrian intervals, which give pedestrians a walk sign five seconds before drivers receive a green, and that allows them to establish a more visible presence out in the intersection before people start turning across them. And as we're doing with most of our projects these days on bike routes, we are looking to add bike boxes on the Howard Street approaches to the intersection. These provide an advanced waiting area, so people can establish a more visible location, and they can also, it's easier to make left turns. You can get in position to make that left turn onto Bodega Howard, or onto Bodega/Washington if that's what you're doing. And I will note that state law allows people on bikes to use those leading pedestrian intervals. So, if you're on a bike and you see that green walk sign go before vehicles have a green, you can actually go. And then another section that's interesting on this corridor, up near West Street, the roadway significantly narrows down a little ways north of Gallon Street and then all the way up to West Street, as you can see here. And in this image, we're facing south from west. You can see on the left side, there is no sidewalk. The sidewalk ends a little ways up the hill where my cursor is. So, we are looking, this is public right-of-way right here where you see these bushes. Obviously, there's a pretty significant, some grating that needs to happen, possibly retaining wall. We have discussed this with the property owner. Again, even though this is city property, and so, something we're looking at is installing a sidewalk here to complete that connection to West Street. We've also heard from many of our friends in the neighborhood at our community meetings that if you're doing that, you might as well carry it around the corner onto West Street, because there's another gap closure on West Street right around the corner from this. So, we're looking at all of that very closely. On the other side of the street, we have challenges presented by the fact that this sidewalk is somewhat unimproved. You can see here where this couch was left in this image, that the sidewalk is actually flush with the roadway. And because this section is somewhat narrow, we've heard a lot of reports of people actually parking on the sidewalk here and blocking it. So, we wanna clean up this whole section and define clear paths of travel, make it clear where we do have room for on-street parking to coexist with the two vehicle lanes. So, this area is something that we're giving very close attention. And before we turn to a focused discussion on Liberty Street, some additional notes that we're looking at just holistically throughout the corridor. So, we are looking at streetlight coverage and drainage and stormwater issues. We are exploring opportunities to incorporate bio swales, which is, those are shown here. These can actually be provided in tandem with those pedestrian bulbouts and to not only add some greenery to the roadway, but also to slow and absorb stormwater, so it's not flowing freely along the gutter until it finds a storm drain. We don't have many storm drains on this corridor, so the water does flow pretty long distances. And then, we're also looking closely at opportunities to incorporate street trees in this project. We're looking at prohibiting left turns from Stanley Street onto Howard Street. We have not done as much analysis on that as we have on Liberty Street, but we have collected some initial data. And what's happening there, people are using Stanley Street as a cut-through to avoid traffic at the Western and Howard intersection. It's pretty much people going from Western, trying to get to Washington, driving eastbound, and we have some concerns about that left turn from Stanley onto Howard, given how close it is to the intersection there at Bodega and Washington. We also have, I mentioned the downtown area parking management plan, also known as the Parking Study, getting underway this month, and that'll take a really comprehensive view at all of our on-street and off-street parking in the downtown area, including this section of Howard Street and the surrounding neighborhoods, and not only give us a real, clear sense of how parking is, how on-street and off-street parking are currently being utilized, but it will also provide recommendations on how to better manage that parking supply to ensure that we're getting turnover, that we're not seeing spillover impacts. And so, hopefully, through that process, we can, we can, we can find some good solutions for the neighbors who have expressed concerns around, especially around the Crooked Goat and Acme Burger area. I will also note, we had, we had an initial community workshop, which I didn't mention, where we did invite folks from the Stanley-Harris Post Street neighborhood last year and did talk about some of those challenges that they were experiencing, and hopefully, have come up with some temporary fixes. We have really done our best to make the City Hall parking lot available for patrons of Crooked Goat and Acme, try to drive parking activity there rather than into the neighborhoods. But we recognize that there are definitely some longer-term strategies that can probably be put into place to further mitigate some of those challenges. So, now we'll go into a focused discussion of Liberty Street, the Liberty Street, A Street, Howard Street intersection, which really rose to the top of the list when we were reviewing, not only the comments we received at the community workshops, but also in the survey, dozens of comments about this intersection being challenging to navigate for all modes of travel, people walking, biking, driving. But also, I think we all recognize the opportunity presented here, where you have this really large expanse of asphalt. And so, it's an exciting design exercise to see an area where we really can reclaim some space and hopefully make this, you know, enhance the sense of place in this area. It's already, obviously, a beautiful neighborhood, but provide an even better pedestrian realm and add even more to the neighborhood's public space. So, a sample of some of the comments, this is just one of the many comments we received. Many of them were focused, actually, on this crosswalk across A Street, just referencing the speeding that people see in the area, and also the very challenging site distance that's created, really largely by the curve coming around from Sixth Street onto Howard And this is an overhead image of the intersection. I'll just bring up one by one some of the issues that people raised. So, first, we have the high speeds entering and exiting that curve going to and from Sixth Street. And if you go stand out there, or, you know, I'm sure many of you have driven it, you'll see people that really kind of cut that, cut that curve and find the shortest and most direct possible line through the curve, and of course, that leads to higher speeds. So, anything we can do to slow that movement down will be helpful. We have the limited site distance for that crosswalk, again, because of the curve, it's just a limited area where you can actually make contact with, between drivers and pedestrians. We have the challenging turns from A Street onto Howard Street, again, given to that, given the limited site distance. Concerns about the right hook, which is a conflict where people driving turn right across people biking, and this is particularly an issue for folks who are biking northbound, trying to stay on Howard Street, and then someone's turning across them, going northbound onto Liberty Street. We have actually had one injury collision involving that movement. We've heard about high speeds entering Liberty Street, which, again, is not surprising, given the conditions here, where you've got essentially a free right turn. You know, there's nothing, there's nothing here in the roadway to slow down that, that turning movement onto Liberty Street. And then last but not least, the challenging left turn maneuver onto Howard Street. You know, you're stopped here, and you're looking for oncoming traffic in both directions, and that can be a tricky maneuver. So, I'll show existing conditions, and we've got two different options that we have, very conceptual options that we have developed so far that we're seeking feedback on. The first involves no changes to the existing circulation. It's just essentially several geometric changes, a big curb extension at the corner of A Street, again, to kind of get rid of that free right onto Liberty Street. We are suggesting actually relocating the crosswalk, pushing it a little ways north onto, closer to Liberty Street, just to provide better site distance, so you avoid that issue with the curve. Now, drivers have come around the curve and they can line up with the crosswalk. At the crosswalk itself, median refuge islands, bulbouts on both sides. And then here, we're recommending extending the median, so that people, again, can't, they just have more restriction on those turning movements as they're entering Liberty they just have more restriction on those turning movements as they're entering Liberty Street. And I just want to say for these, these are very conceptual, therefore illustrative purposes only, they're not to scale. So this is just to give us enough to basically understand and discuss these concepts tonight. The second concept takes all of those elements and, and then adds a one-way condition on Liberty Street going northbound from Howard to Western Avenue. And so as you can see here, no, no more southbound traffic turning onto Howard Street from Liberty. And this would create, enable us to add angled parking on, along the park and church frontage on that block from Howard Street to Western Avenue. Otherwise, everything else in this is the same. So when we look at the one-way impacts, we estimate that the conversion to angled parking would increase parking from 16 spaces, which are currently there along the church and park, park frontage, excuse me, to roughly 35 to 40 spaces. And we would retain the parallel parking on the other side of the street fronted by homes. And we asked a local transportation consulting firm, W Trans, to analyze the impacts of that one-way conversion, and that was attached to your staff report as attachment two. This would result in roughly 900 southbound vehicles per weekday being dispersed to the surrounding street grid. The good news is that this is a street grid, so those, those impacts, disbursement impacts are not absorbed all by one street. The bulk of the impacts are expected to be on Keller and Fifth Street and Howard Street. So we've got forty-five, forty-seven percent of that southbound traffic is expected to divert to Keller Street, which equates to 34 to 52 vehicles during the peak hours of the day. And 20% expected to go to Howard Street, which equates to 14 to 22 vehicles per hour during peak hours. So those are the intersections, the two intersections that would have the greatest impact, the Howard Western and the Howard Keller intersections. However, the increases are very minimal. Expected to be less than one second per vehicle at each intersection in those peak hours. So from tonight, we are seeking feedback from you, the city council and our community on the proposed design elements and specifically on the Liberty Street intersection and circulation changes. And we are, again, planning to really focus our upcoming community engagement efforts on that Liberty Street, Howard Street intersection, especially given the historic and the attention to the historic elements and aesthetics of that location. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good presentation, Verith Earl. And what I didn't see there was the, all the data that you had on the traffic patterns, which is very extensive. So if anyone wants to look in the major report, I think they look in the agenda packet, there will be lots and lots of traffic analysis that was done, that was presented there. So we're going to go to questions from the council members to the staff on this issue. So is there any questions at this time? Councilmember Barnacle.
I have one question. It's for the city attorney. I'm sorry I didn't ask this ahead of time. I don't mean to spring things on you. Our mayor is recused from this. It strikes me that we've moved to district elections. And one of the things that the residents that we represent are going to want is want, you know, one of the benefits that we're looking for from that is that council members that know the district, walk the streets every day, drive the streets every day, are able to be part of these discussions and represent them. And, you know, I don't live within 500 feet, so I didn't have to recuse myself. But I know if I was, if I did have to recuse myself from this project, I'd be pretty frustrated. And if I was a resident, my council member, my council representative couldn't represent me on the street and I was, you know, I'd be pretty frustrated. So I'm just wondering if you can talk, like, is there something we can do within our city documents to allow, you know, now that we are in district elections, to actually allow the council members to represent that district, to represent, you know, streets like, you know, projects like this?
That's a very interesting question. The short answer is, and probably unsatisfying answer, is that the Political Reform Act regulations have not really accommodated districting. And it's state law, so it's not something we're free to ignore locally or to legislate differently. And I don't mean, I mean, we are able to legislate differently than state law for municipal affairs, but this is not one, it's a statewide set of regulations regarding conflicts. The, the only, you know, minimal reassurance I can give is that remember, when we talked about this during the districting process, and it's still true and will remain true, that although our, as a result of districting, peddled up city council members are now elected from the residents of their district, they still nonetheless represent the entire city. They're fiduciaries for the entire city. And so that means other members can be approached and probably should expect to be approached, especially when a district's representative may be in a position of being recused on an issue, and others will arise too. Just because the, the proximity rules that we're dealing with here, obviously, are the proximity rules where a member has an interest in real property that's in particular within 500 feet of a project, unless an exception applies, and in some cases within 1,000 feet of a project. So this issue will recur. We will certainly keep the council updated if changes do result from districting. A lot of the districting has happened in the relatively near past. So maybe that will occur.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll take it up with my senator.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Peter Thompson?
I got a question. So with Liberty Street, if we're going north, are we looking at one-way all the way to Washington Street with angled parking?
No, for now, for this project, we are just looking at the block going to Western Avenue.
Just, okay, to Western, but there is a possibility that we could.
Yeah, I know there, there have been previous proposals looking at one-way couplets, a one-way couplet, which is a pairing of two one-ways going in opposite directions with, with Keller Street and and Liberty Street. But, but for this, for this project, we're just looking at the, that block. We're trying to keep it to that level, because obviously, as soon as you start going beyond that one block, this is going to open up into a much, much bigger conversation about circulation and.
It's hard to just, you know, stick within the block, you know, the smaller, but when we look at parking, we'll be, we'll, we'll be looking at that for angled parking, for more parking downtown, one-way streets? When that process starts?
That, yeah, that certainly is something that can be analyzed and we can engage the community on that if, if there's a desire to see additional on-street capacity added, that's, that's one of the ways we could do it.
Okay, and then onto Howard Street, the big hump in the road, that'll be leveled off, so it's flat?
To the extent possible. The utilities on Howard are very shallow and I actually might call on my colleague, Lucas Pereira, who's an assistant engineer. He's managing the the utility portion of the project. I know he's on Zoom as well as Jeff Stutzman, our deputy director of operations, see if either of them want to chime in on the.
I guess, over the years, did they just, instead of flattening the road again,
Right.
they just kept piling on?
Yeah, yeah.
My, my daughter lives on Howard Street, Sam's Fresh Eggs, if you've ever seen that little stand, and getting out of my car is really hard, just opening the door because of that big hump, so.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something we've discussed at our, our community meetings. It's, it's a condition that exists throughout the Oak Hill neighborhood. We've got really high crowns on the streets. And my understanding, I'm not a utility person, but my understanding has always been that that is due to very shallow utilities in the neighborhood. So Lucas or Jeff, do you want to chime in from Zoom?
Yeah, no, I could chime in. You're, you're right. I mean, I think when they installed a lot of those utilities in the day, combination of the equipment and manpower and all that, that the pipes were laid very shallow and the road was built up over it, so many of the steep crowns. It is a combo of shallow utilities and, and overlays. So to the degree possible, we will try to smooth out the road and make it flatter, but it's to a degree as we're working around all the existing utilities.
Are we doing utility work?
Yeah, so it's all, so water and sewer utilities. And Lucas can provide the specifics if you're interested in what is actually being replaced.
Why they can't be deeper if you're opening the street up? Why would we stick with the specific depth that they're at now?
So I'll defer to Jeff and Lucas on, on those questions.
Yeah, I mean, for, for sewer, it's got to drain downhill. So it's, for the most part, we got to maintain kind of existing. There could be some opportunities with water to lower it as, as needed, but there's also other utilities in there too that we'll, we'll look at. So again, very preliminary layout design. So as we get farther into the design and what type of pavement reconstruction we're doing, that's something we can look at for sure.
Thank you. And I liked the, the design, you know, just moving the crossing, because I'm down there a lot. And it's really dangerous for, for everybody. So the design, I'm looking forward to see the final design. Safety is number one.
Thank you. Councilmember Postacay.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question. I guess I first want to say that I'm really excited about this Liberty Street work. I, I got a lot of hairs and it seems like anytime I drive in that, in that intersection, they're all on end, you know, I just don't like driving there. I haven't seen any accidents or anything and it's usually not that crowded, but so I'm happy about that. Wanted to know with all that concrete, it looks like we're going to pour there, at least on those pictures, if there's anything we can do to green some of that, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
Trees might interfere with visibility, bio swell?
Yeah, thank you very much. I meant to, I meant to call that out. That gray is just to, to show you kind of the space that's being the opportunity there to, to basically remove that paved surface, you know, convert it from asphalt into something else, whether that's plaza area landscaping, that's all to be determined. You know, once we have the concept, we'll start working on some, some landscape designs there. And that's, that's really what I was kind of alluding to with the future engagement with, with the neighborhood and, and city committees and commissions. We'll, we'll be focused on the, the actual design elements.
Thanks.
Councilman Dell?
Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot of activity on Howard Street. And I don't know when the improvements were made in front of St. Vincent's Church, but that used to be a street. And it's now a great community gathering point. But I got married there in 1982, and that's where the, the classic car picked the cup us up and took us off to our reception. Anyway, that Howard Street is used by the elementary school children who walk from the elementary school down Howard Street, across Bodega and then to the church. And that happens the first Friday of the month and also other activities that happen at the church that the children need to go to. So that really always makes me nervous when I see a group of children walking across Bodega Avenue, and it's been that way for decades since I was a kid. And then there's also the day laborers and their vehicles park on Howard Street and are in front of the neighbors. And I've heard from a lot of the neighbors' concerns about that. So we have to address that. The sidewalk in front of the new Acme, there was a driveway there, so the, the, right before you get to the crosswalk, it's like a slanted driveway, and it's very dangerous to try to walk because it's actually a driveway and not a sidewalk. So that needs improvement. And there is not enough streetlights on Howard Street all the way down into the residential area, as far as I'm concerned, and walking it at night. And I know our mayor walks home that way. So it always makes me nervous and Mr., Councilmember Healy, they walk back to their homes through the downtown and there's just not a light, enough lights. So I don't know what, if we need LED lights or what. A Street is very, very narrow and it could benefit from a one-way. So it didn't feed onto Howard Street or Liberty there. So I don't know how you can think about that, but especially with the bulb out, it's not really wide enough for two cars. I usually pull over if I'm sneaking down A Street to come to City Hall. And also, the church does not have any ADA parking. I think there's one ADA. I know because I drive my parents to church on Sunday and there, I'm always like, okay, we can drop you off and then I'll go park at City Hall and, and pick you up after mass. So that is really a concern. And it's not just Sundays, but there's many funerals and activities, weddings that happen, and they need more disabled parking in that area. And there's a big red, and I know you or somebody answered it in our council questions, but that takes up a lot of parking. And if the diagonal increases the parking without being a safety hazard, I'm all for it. Thanks.
Questions? Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, just speaking of the parking lot across from the church, where, you know, the city parking lot. Is there a way of making that a dual use that like on the weekends, you could have handicap spaces, but during the week not?
Funny you should ask. I actually, I actually said something to our public safety folks, because I would love, because we're really trying to encourage folks to use our parking lots over evenings and weekends. And, and that is one lot that needs to be probably resigned. So I'll be working with staff to do that.
Thank you.
And there is actually, there is one ADA space in that lot that we are looking at making improvements to bring it up to current ADA. So that, that is available as well as a nearby option. But we have, we have reached out to the church and, and understand that their only accessible entrance is on Howard Street. I know exactly which door it is, so we will definitely be moving forward with that in mind, trying to provide the accessible parking that they need as close as possible to that entrance.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple of questions. Since if we can turn it into a one-way on Liberty Street, so in fact, I'm one of those folks that take that shortcut quite often to get by. So I fully agree with everything you said about that, how dangerous that can be, both bike and car. And, but if it comes one-way with that, with the slanted parking, is it possible that we could actually use that street more often as an event area, close it off? And then we could actually have some public events in that zone, because that's a pretty nice wide street to have events. So would that make it easier to, to do so?
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't know if I feel totally comfortable saying absolutely yes or no, but there is, nice thing about, again, about a grid is that you have redundancy in the street network. So as far as circulation impacts, would, you know, would traffic come to a standstill in the surrounding area if Liberty Street were closed? Probably not. Howard Street is really the key connector there. So if you were closing Howard Street, I'd say yes, you might have some impacts, but Liberty Street, probably not for those temporary, you know, for short-term events.
Okay, good, because there might be some opportunities to do that now if we just have it at one-way. Okay, are we going to do the same thing with the asphalt as we did on McDowell? And that is to actually take up all the asphalt and put it back down again? Or do we have to, or is it going to be a different?
It's going to be very similar to what we did on Garfield, Somout Parkway, what we call full-depth reclamation, most likely to rehabilitate it. So it's mixing the existing asphalt and base material with cement to create a, a strong base and then put down a, an AC layer on top.
Okay, good. Lastly, you know, no, this one's coming because I know, because I work with relief and do orgotries and greenery. We've heard before about, oh, we're going to try to put the green stuff in, you're going to try to put the trees in, but there's always utilities in the way and the like. How serious can we be and how serious have we already been in investigating spots for greenery and trees and bio swales? I know it's, conceptually, we love the idea, but I know it's extremely difficult. So have we really looked at, at, from a practical point of view at this point, do we have some areas that we could actually do that?
Yeah, we, we've looked, not as much with the street trees yet, but we have looked very closely at the. closely at the potential opportunities along the corridor, of which there are many where where the bioswales and other stormwater features could be incorporated. And we're also, you know, our understanding is that there are certain tree species that can actually be installed within bioswales and they can handle those higher velocity flows and a little bit more, you know, water or, you know, around the root system. So I think it's something where it's, we're excited by this opportunity to potentially begin incorporating that, more of that in our paving projects. I do need to go back because I, you know, I was a little caught off guard by the question about events on Liberty Street. But obviously with any, with any closed street event, you know, the key considerations are our public safety really and access for any adjacent property owners, properties, and of which there are obviously many on Liberty Street with lots of residences and you've got a couple of businesses. So, you know, from a traffic standpoint, like I said, Liberty Street is, it doesn't have the same level of importance to our traffic circulation as Howard Street, for example, which moves five times as many vehicles per day. But, you know, obviously there are many other things that are taken into consideration for events and street closures, so.
Good. And I think I saw some of the photos that Nikolai Frye sent to us earlier today or yesterday and discussing a lot about the sidewalks. Will we be doing or can we do rejuvenation of all the sidewalks on the section of the street as we go? Or are we just doing paving? And how much of those sidewalks can we really work with to make them right and make the tree planters right and do all that?
Yeah, Jeff, do you want to answer that one? I know we've been doing quite a few sidewalk and driveway upgrades on paving projects, but is there a?
Yeah, it's, I think it's a tricky, tricky one to tackle with the sidewalks. And I guess I go to the most recent example as we're working on Maria right now and going down. When we see issues, we're trying to address them as we go. So the goal is to replace them. I have not been out there to see what that extent is, but obviously sidewalk adds quite the expense to it. And then we start talking about it kind of starts pulling into driveway. So it is, it is something that can grow a project and the scope starts to increase a lot. But obviously the goal is to get those all replaced the best that we can.
Okay, good. So I just want to realize there is a huge financial cost to doing that work, but it's also essential. So trying to make those decisions and it's probably put you over budget for the project to do that, but something to consider. Okay, so with that, is there any other questions from council members? Okay, if not, then we'll turn it over to a public comment. And so the public is invited to make comments on this item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. So if, I guess if we have our 30-minute, 30-second announcement, we can make sure everyone has a chance to bring a card up to the clerk. Okay, thank you. And it looks like the city clerk, if you have received any comments prior to this meeting?
Yes, we received three comments on this item. They are posted on the website.
Okay, thank you. So the clerk could now read the instructions.
Yes. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dais will be reset for each speaker.
Okay, more cards are showing up. As soon as they're all in, we'll go ahead and collect them. Okay, we have eight cards in front of us. And so that's going to be three minutes each, 21 minutes or 24 minutes total. So but if you happen to refer to a prior person's comments and say ditto to the prior person, or you support that prior person's comments, help shorten that up a little bit. So the first person up is going to be Nikolai Frye. Nikolai.
As you know, my name is Nikolai Frye. I'm the chair of the Petaluma Senior Advisory Committee, but in addition, I'm disabled. I use a cane, a walker and a power wheelchair depending on my daily needs for mobility. I previously worked for, with Ken, our former traffic engineer regarding accessibility needs on some of the Petaluma sidewalks and streets. I was recently contacted and asked to do an informal review prior to this meeting regarding the potential accessibility issues on Howard Street Improvement Project. Utilizing my walker, I traversed portions of Howard Street, walking up one side and returning on the other. Originally, I had planned to utilize my wheelchair, but I noticed that there were too many corners without curb cuts and I couldn't use it. This lack of accessibility with the wheelchair concerned me, so I decided that my walker would allow me greater, although more limited, mobility. Even though I was limited in the ground I could cover, I was able to prepare a review of some of the concerns and difficulties. In addition, I have done an internet search of the areas I was not physically able to walk. I hope that presentations, as was made to the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee, could be made to the senior advisory committee in the future. The issues for seniors and the disabled are in the forefront of our goals and we are working towards successfully embedding all-age design for every aspect of our city, including its streets. After reviewing all of the documents provided by the city website and utilizing maps of the areas with my camera, my trusty tape measure and my good friend Judy, who took my notes, I prepared a document detailing some of the more obvious accessibility issues I experienced as a handicapped pedestrian. I have submitted this document as public comment to this meeting in the hopes that it was read. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And that the accessibility and mobility needs of seniors and of disabled pedestrians are taken into account when the final Howard Street Improvement Project plans are prepared. Thanks you for your time.
Thank you, Nikolai. Next up will be Martin Van Tassel, followed by Gary Hagabert.
Thank you, City Council. I'm Martin Van Tassel. I live on Liberty Street and I rise to speak in favor of the improvements on Liberty Street to make them one-way with the additional parking spaces with the comments made for the additional sidewalk repairs on both Liberty and on Howard Street. And I think it's a good idea whose time has come. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Okay, Gary? Followed by Maureen Highland.
Hi, I'm Gary Hagbert. I live on the West Side. I don't live in the neighborhood here, but I want to mention the second option looks great. I walk that area all the time. That's crosswalk at Liberty and A Street is a death trap waiting to happen, so that definitely needs to get fixed. If you do the one-way down Liberty, which again, I think it's great, I ask that you look at Fifth and A, that intersection there, because that's also a little sketchy when it comes to pedestrian crossing. If more traffic is going to get diverted that way because you've changed Liberty Street, that area needs some consideration as well. Thank you.
Maureen Highland, followed by Ginny Haas.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me a moment. I just want to commend your team. We've been meeting and emailing and everything. We run Alphabet Soup, benefit thrift stores that mission serves to benefit the students in all our schools. If Liberty Street goes one-way, we would ask that it would be considered or reviewed to have it go the opposite direction of one-way? Because at this point, to be a good neighbor, we would be sending our donors down A Street or they'd have to be retrained to come down Keller, to go down to B, to come back around. So they wouldn't be able to turn left on to Liberty directly to do their donations. And our donations are what we sell. We do not have any other inventory. So if those are negatively impacted, our businesses as well. So I am being asked to sign a five-year lease now. And for me, this is a very important part of whether we can sustain ourselves if that direction of that street changes. Thank you.
Ginny Haas, followed by Rory Keller.
Hi, Ginny Haas. I live on Sixth Street and walk probably every day or every other day down to downtown instead of using a car and crossing Howard. I don't do it. I jaywalk. Because what happens is there's a trajectory that people pick up speed and I don't think that moving the crosswalk further down is going to alleviate that. It's almost like you need to put a stop sign at A and Sixth. And that would stop people and slow them down because you, I mean, you just see it. People just, they get to a certain point and they just hit it by the time they get to A Street. And it's a very dangerous crosswalk there. The other thing is, I do like the idea where you guys are going with all of this, the other parts of it, but when you do the handicap access, there's the ones with the curb that you've done and it's a killer at night if you forget that they're there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rory, followed by Michael Schultz.
Good evening. Thank you. I bicycle and walk in that area all the time. I am very concerned that most of the bike traffic will end up being routed up to Western, Western and Howard. And that intersection is horrible. You cannot walk across that safely. You can't ride a bike across it safely. I don't think you can drive across it safely either, but with the five streets coming in there. And I know something's going to be done there, but I'm just want to express my concern that something really major be done there because it is an accident waiting to happen every day, every single day. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Schultz, followed by Rich Johnson. Schwartz.
Yes, sorry. So I wanted to make sure it wasn't a Michael Schultz. I am Michael Schwartz. I live at Two Liberty, which is right at the corner of A Street. And we've participated in some of the planning meetings, one in particular. We've talked to neighbors since the plan was announced and we do have some concerns, aesthetic and otherwise, about moving the crosswalk from where it is right now, although we do acknowledge it is a dangerous crosswalk and something needs to be done. We're also concerned about the expansion of the sidewalks, also for aesthetic reasons. The way it's structured right now, it sort of makes aesthetic sense. And I'm fearful that we're going to have a lot of concrete. If we put other kind of greenery in, I'm not sure how that's going to work. So I'd like to be involved in that process. And that's all I have to say. Just wanted to.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Okay, Rich Johnson?
Yes, hi, I'm Rich Johnson. This will be real brief. I'm kind of piggybacking on what Maureen Highland was talking about, and I'm the one that's trying to negotiate that five-year lease. So, but the change of the pattern of traffic to get to the stop-off spot is a big concern of Maureen's, as it is mine and my property owners. One way is, well, I guess I should just sum it all up by saying I'm pretty much in line with what Maureen Highland is talking about. But we haven't talked about the effect on the businesses on Western Avenue and that's something else that I think needs to be addressed. Most important, the notification at the get-go of this whole project, and I've talked to Bjorn on this, the owners were not informed of this thing happening. The tenants were, but I didn't hear from any of the tenants about this issue and I didn't hear about it until I talked to Maureen. So I'm concerned about the notification of the property owners and effect on their leases and their tenants and their future. Thank you.
Thank you for all the comments. All very good. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council for now, comments or suggestions? Are you on this end? Mr. Councilman Bartolome, starting with you.
Sure. I've seen the presentation multiple times, I pee back at the community meetings. One, I'm really excited to see all the changes. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of putting the bike lane in the uphill direction. It's something I haven't thought about. I continue to be concerned that we aren't putting enough emphasis right at the church and Bassett Street. That's just an area, like there's no, it's not lit up. It's one of those areas where I just think, you know, there's hundreds of kids that cross the street there every day. I used to live on Bassett, so I've seen it. And I just think that maybe we're not putting enough emphasis in that one specific area because also that's the area that had the highest speeding issues when we did the speeding analysis. The one-way on Liberty, I'm certainly in support of it. I think with all the concerns we get about parking, it's not every day you get to add parking to our downtown. I am supportive of analyzing, you know, looking at the other direction. I think regardless of which direction it is, important is going to be signage because a lot of times people, the traffic that we see in town is like, people don't know where the parking garage is, so they drive around the block three times. Or people don't know that, you know, like if I'm going to be dropping something off at Alphabet Soup, I need to, you know, go up to Howard Street, turn left and then turn left again, you know, or something like that. So I just think, especially, you know, in the early days, we need to be really thoughtful about signage so that we don't create that situation where people are just driving around wondering what the heck is going on here. The, to the comments about extensive concrete, I'm concerned about that too, although I just, I think that the design of that area and making it aesthetic is absolutely something that we want the community to be involved in. But I think, you know, if we do this right, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot better than a bunch of asphalt there, I think. And, you know, this is, to me, this, having been to a couple of community meetings on this and I don't think I've ever seen a transportation project with so much support, actually. It feels, it feels really good. To the comment about the, you know, the speeding and moving the sidewalk, I hate, I hate stop signs because generally people don't stop. I think moving the crosswalk is a good thing. And honestly, I think that the combination of moving the crosswalk and then the pedestrian, the pedestrian things in the middle are going to really make a huge, huge difference in terms of just how fast people feel comfortable in going around that turn. Because they're going to come around that turn and then there's going to be a big piece of concrete right in the center of the street and they're going to look at it. And I think that it's going to create, you know, a really, really significant impact on slowing cars coming around there. I absolutely think that the impacts on Fifth and A are currently, that's a significant issue and we should look at those. And then the final thing, I understand Councilmember Schirbs', or Vice Mayor Schirbs', comments about the cost impacts of closing sidewalk gaps, but we closed, you know, over a couple miles of sidewalk gaps on North McDowell and that's infrastructure that's going to be there for the next 50 or 100 years. So I'm supportive of if we're going to do it, let's spend the money and close the sidewalk gaps so that we address the ADA concerns and, you know, it's just, that's what it means to be an age-friendly city. So those are my thoughts.
Councilman Kater Thompson?
I'm always happy with safety improvements, especially in dangerous areas. I did get a little confused when you were talking about the one-way. So you're talking about Saks versus the one by Petaluma Market, the back of Petaluma Market?
Bjorn, can you?
Bjorn, can you pull up the map? And it might help just visually.
Yeah, that would be great.
So I did, because we have, we have heard, you know, about the concerns to the thrift shops. So did go through an exercise of kind of charting out the new routes that people would use to get to the thrift store from all directions. And then what additional trip length is being added for them. So, so the thrift store is right here at the corner, or their drop-off zone, I should say, is right here on Liberty Street, near the corner of Western Avenue. So if you were coming from Western Avenue or Howard Street now, you know, whereas previously you would have continued on Western, taken a quick right onto Liberty, now you would be expected to go down Howard, turn left onto Liberty, and then kind of backtrack onto that block. So that's an additional 550 feet of driving for those people coming from sort of the northwest. For folks coming from Washington Street via Keller and A Street, so previously they probably would have taken Washington to Liberty, come straight down. Now they would come down Keller and then use A Street and pop up, again, turn right onto Liberty, additional 1,200 feet. And then impacts are similar for folks coming from Liberty if they wanted to instead use Howard rather than using Keller, 1,100 feet. And then for folks coming from Petaluma Boulevard, again, just same difference, 1,200 feet. Or coming from Howard, 1,100 feet. So those are, it's essentially adding one block of driving for people coming from north of the thrift store. If you're coming from Sixth Street or anywhere from the south, the impacts are, there really aren't any impacts. You know, you're coming northbound onto Liberty Street, stopping there, dropping off. And now when you leave, you're probably going to take a right and go to the Boulevard or, you know, use one of these streets to get back where you're going, or use Howard Street to go southbound. So hopefully that's kind of helpful for showing the circulation.
That was helpful.
And just to address the, we have looked at the idea of going one-way, southbound, and it just, you're sending people to a movement that has a lot of, a lot more conflicts, right? Because I mentioned how challenging it is to turn onto Howard from southbound Liberty. You're turning across two directions of traffic with limited sight distance. Whereas that northbound movement onto Liberty from Howard, you know, it's the, kind of the prevailing movement there is people are making a right onto Liberty with no conflicts. There's no, you don't have to yield to opposing traffic or, it's just a lot easier.
Yeah, I see that and I understand that. And I think this is the preferred design. And just myself dropping off there, I mean, I personally would not have a problem going different directions to get to, to get to the space that I need to. And I think the addition of the parking spaces is a real benefit. And so I think it is best to go north because of safety. And I don't think it's really going to affect the business on the corner.
Well, and I was just going to say, we do, we did hear the comment about signage. I mean, I think this can be crucial, not just for Alphabet Soup, but for any of those businesses in that area. I think if we do some really good signage to let folks know, you know where to go.
It just seems safer and more walkable because it's safer.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Nell, any comments?
So the Alphabet Soup speakers who were in support of the project but wanted it to go a different direction, were they saying that it should be going north? Or should they be saying it's going south? I'm now confused.
What I heard, so what we have put forward is a rec, is an idea to go northbound, one-way northbound. So from Howard to Western, what they were, if I'm correct, what they were saying was, you know, for us to consider, they wanted us to consider going one-way, southbound from Western towards Howard.
Okay. So I think we really need to talk to them and the other businesses. And also, if you're not doing anything on a Sunday, there's going to be like a thousand cars coming in and out of that area between 9:00 AM and noon and 1:00. Because it's Mother's Day and it's like the biggest crowd besides Easter at that church and that intersection. And people trying to cross in both directions because one mass is emptying and the, and the noon mass is a Spanish-speaking mass of their coming. And there is so much congestion in that area. Whatever improvements we can do, it would make me feel better on Sunday, not saying that Hail Mary across the street as we wait for traffic. Because they do come around Sixth Street, that bend, very fast and put on their brakes. And it's, I always forget to turn away from that area when I'm leaving from the City Hall. So the signage, the better because Sonoma and Sebastopol did not do a great job of signing or they did it and then 10 years later they remove the signage and I get lost. I, oh no, this is a one-way street. So we have to keep that signage up for a long periods of time, not for just the honeymoon phase. So whatever we can do for safety and working with the tenants, and definitely we need to notice the landlords when we do these projects. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Postecave.
Thanks. Yeah, I would just add at this point that I also support doing anything we can with the sidewalks there because they're pretty bad.
Okay, I think almost everything has been said so far. So everything is good. The only thing I would possibly suggest is in the slanted parking, that most of it's going to be on the side where the church is. But where the Alphabet Soup is, I know that the drop-off tends to be this little alleyway in the back. And there's parallel parking there, folks getting in and out. So if we could put at that, that inner, right there at the corner, near the corner, if we put slanted parking there and kind of shift it over from side to side, that would give more parking for folks to come in and out and be able to get into their cars maybe a little bit easier to drop off materials. So that might be helpful to improve that situation there for the drop-offs. So I know I run into that problem when I do a lot of drop-offs at the thrift store of trying to find a parking and running across the street all the time with goods. So we want to get as many people parked on that side, close to them as possible. So it's easier drop-off and deliveries for folks coming in through there. And also, if there is a larger truck that's making a turn onto Howard and then getting down into Liberty, so that from your diagrams, it might be a little hard for a longer, bigger truck to get, make that turn. So just make sure there's enough turning radius in there so that a larger vehicle, so if, so if even a small, very large flatbed starts coming through, a larger even, someone even has an RV bus, can actually make that turn or not. That might be something to consider. Just make sure it's wide enough. Other than that, I think I've, I think you've collected lots and lots of information.
One more. I just want to make sure that I express my support for no left turns off of Stanley onto Howard. I think that's an important one, especially for the high school flow. So I hope that makes its way into the final design.
Okay, any other comments? Do you have adequate information? Anything other questions you have that you would like to help, get help with?
Yeah, no, this was all very helpful. Thank you. Thanks to you and once again to the community.
Good. Then we'll close this topic and then we'll invite the mayor back in. Thank you. Next item up, number 10, will be introduced in a second.
Okay. Glad to be back. And I believe we are on item 10, resolution establishing the Public Safety Advisory Committee and receiving an addendum to the IPA report. And with us for this is Chief Miller.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Brian Miller. I'm your police chief. I'm joined by Lieutenant Nick McGowan, our professional standards lieutenant. We're also joined virtually by our independent police auditor, Jeff Schlinger, and Denise Lewis. In front of you tonight is a resolution establishing the Public Safety Advisory Committee and to receive an addendum to the IPA report, which we previously presented on. Next slide, please. Thanks. Am I good on the sound now? Little bit better? Okay. So this is a brief overview of what we'll be covering tonight. The background, composition, and membership of the proposed committee, roles and responsibilities, the proposed meeting structure and expectations, implementation timeline, and recommendation and Q and A. Next slide. So we just wanted to take a moment to really highlight the work over the last few years from the community input, the work of city staff, and our, the great efforts and lift getting to this place, starting initially in 2021 with the establishment of our 28 community member, ad hoc community advisory committee. The work in 2022 where our city council identified the establishment of a hybrid civilian police oversight model as one of the top 10 goals and priorities. And that included the implementation of our independent police auditor and the proposed creation of this public safety advisory committee. In 2023, we selected our independent police auditor, Integrisure. And we recently, in 2024, submitted our first annual report and presented to council. We currently are here tonight proposing a resolution to form the Public Safety Advisory Committee with recommendations to council. Next slide. So the compensation and membership is being proposed to follow our CCB process, which we're familiar, and we had an announcement earlier tonight soliciting community interest through that process. And we are proposing six community members with one city council member to serve as a liaison to this committee. We're seeking city residents and business owners. And the term limits would follow our CCBs with four and two-year terms, and they would be staggered at the initial implementation of this committee. No current or former employees of the police department or immediate family members thereof would be permissible to serve on this committee because we want it to be independent of the police department, as well as persons who have active or pending criminal proceedings or have prior criminal convictions or violent felonies would be ineligible. Next slide. For the roles and responsibilities, we're really looking for the PSAC members to be representative of a range of interests and experience from diverse backgrounds within our community. This is to include the business community, our education system, nonprofits, public relations, faith-based organizations, and our youth. We want and are seeking that the PSAC act as a community resource to assist us in the formation of our strategies, development of community policing concepts, increase our public awareness and engagement, and assist in addressing police and community relations. I think it's important that we spend, and one of our four service priorities is focusing on community engagement. And we really look to this committee as being a conduit to increase those engagement opportunities. We look for the PSAC to provide a forum for discussions concerning community concerns and to have a broad spectrum of viewpoints represented within those meetings. Some of the things that we're proposing is to review our independent police draft annual report, as well as our annual military equipment report, provide input on our police policies, assist in the developmentation of our strategic plans, and make suggestions to police services and public safety programs and initiatives. We'd also like assistance in educating the community about the function and the role of the police department. Next slide. So as far as the meetings and the expectations, what we're really looking for is engagement. We want participation, active participation in the meetings, and regular attendance. We hope and ask that everyone on the committee serve and treat each other with dignity and respect. We would be encouraging participation beyond the meetings at our police community events and the participation in ride-alongs. And the meetings would be proposed to be held monthly for up to 90 minutes with the creation of a chairperson to represent the committee. Next slide. This is our proposed timeline, which we're excited because we're currently in that first triangle. We're here in May proposing the establishment and the creation of the Public Safety Advisory Committee. As mentioned, currently, we are opening the recruitment period for our CCBs, which this process would parallel and be inclusive of that. And then the hope would be that you all would be making selections to seat the first ever PSAC here in July when you go through those, review of those other CCBs. Next slide. And so as mentioned, in front of you, the resolution is to adopt the attached resolution establishing the Public Safety Advisory Committee, as well as receive the addendum to the IPA report. And I'll turn it over to council for questions. To you, mayor.
Well, thank you very much. It's a thing, yes. Councilmember Barnacle.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just one question. On the term limits, does that apply just to the community members or does that also apply to the council as well?
Thank you for that question. The council member serving as a liaison would be on a one-year term.
Just like they are with the other CCBs.
Which I suppose would come into conformance the first January of each cycle. Yeah. Councilmember Nell.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I heard from the community, and I think I issued some of my questions, and thank you for the answers. One thing I didn't ask was, how are we going to recruit the youth? You said you wanted one youth representative on the committee. Would you go to the high schools? Since we don't have our school resource officers, do you go to the schools and speak to the students or do you speak to the faculty and they recommend certain students to serve? How are we going to do that process?
Yeah, I know that we had great success in the ad hoc process, having youth representation in that committee. I would imagine that much like the city manager, and I believe the mayor, who recently presented to the high schools and got good feedback. I know from my own nephew, he spoke highly of learning about the city and civic governance that through our connections with the school board and through school staff, that we could solicit or encourage and share information so that they could assist us in expanding our outreach.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And Councilmember Schirbs.
Just one quick, when you say the addendum to the IPA, I mean, this is the addendum itself. There's not an additional thing on top of it. This is the addendum?
Yeah, so attached with the staff report was an addendum. There was a number of additional data points and graphs that were requested from our previous presentation, as well as responses to public comments that were previously submitted. So those were attachments three and four, I believe, in the staff packet.
So, but they are in the packet if anybody wants to review them?
Absolutely.
Those are extra pieces of information.
That's correct.
I was just checking on that, make sure that that was there. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kater Thompson.
Thank you. Like even in the schools, there are students that don't live within the city limits. Is it reasonable to have maybe one space for somebody that doesn't live within Petaluma but within the sphere?
I think that there, we would welcome direction. We're making proposals here. I think maybe as it's specific to youth, if I was to offer an opinion, we're looking for business owners that are within the city. A youth's business really is, their job and focus is going to school. So maybe that would be relevant and pertinent.
I guess, you know, I'm thinking of someone like Faith Ross. I'm not sure if Faith is interested, but she- I'm not sure if Faith is interested, but she's certainly very active and probably is a person that we might want to talk or encourage her to find people to apply.
So council, these are policy choices for the council. We're teeing this up because it's a council priority and so, and because it completes a very important part, sort of like the third leg of the stool of our civilian police oversight restructure scheme. And we're happy to take the council's direction. I also realize when we get to the right time, and this one's on me, we did lots of teamwork on this like we always do, but I left some ambiguity in the first part of section three of the composition. It's not completely clear as it should be that it consists of a total of seven seats. So I'd like to fix that up before this gets offered in whatever final form the council wants to offer it with whatever adjustments it wishes to make. So we'll be ready to see that direction. Thanks.
I think I'm seeing not a lack of clarity. I think I've seen a lot of support to make this happen. And with no other questions coming up right now, I'd like to, oh, do anything. Thank you. Councilmember Poszke.
I just had generated a question, Eric, in terms of, when you say seven, you mean including the council liaison? Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Right now it says, "The PSAC shall consist of six community members representing diverse interests and backgrounds and include one city council member as a city council liaison." But is that, does that, that's the ambiguity, and it's my fault. It should say, I think it should go on to say, "For a total of seven seats on the PSAC."
Yeah, okay.
That would be my, so I snuck it in, sorry.
Good. Councilmember now.
I was just, for clarity, that people would fill out the applications and then submit them to us, and then we would do the final. And I know some committees, I think the airport has one that can be in the county that has, you know, the zip code of, they live in Petaluma, but they're outside of city limits. And I believe that there's one on the airport commission like that. I could be wrong. And then, so are we also going to try to make it like three from the east side, three from the west side? You know, businesses from the east side and the west side? I'm like, I'm just, now it's opening up all these questions.
Sure. I think, you know, the one thing, as far as, our focus was on predominantly individuals that are working or residing within the city limits, is because that's the purview and the jurisdiction of our police department. If they're residing outside of those areas, then they generally are serviced by a different public safety agency. So I think we'd still prefer and have the preference, I do understand and acknowledge that I think our youth that are attending schools may be in a slightly different situation. And then as far, again, like the city attorney mentioned, these are policy decisions on how it's being structured, but I think we welcome and just look for active participation and engagement from a broad representation of the city collectively.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, that brings up some questions on what staff is going to be also engaged in this meeting, because I understand it's going to be an advisory group with a liaison from the council. So which staff, whether it's going to be the city staff or the police staff, that's going to be involved in this group? And also, we have our auditor, but they're mostly off-site. Will they be participating in this group, and how will they participate? So how does that work to make sure that the group functions well?
Sure. We're one city, one team, so city staff will all be consisting and assisting us. But the police department and myself, our professional standards lieutenant, soon a deputy police chief, once we make that selection and announcement, will be primarily our staff. We will also have professional staff support from our department, as well as our city attorney's support from the city manager's office and our HR department.
Right, so which brings up to the leadership portion. There was the chair of the committee. Will there be a chair that would be one of these citizens, or will it be run by a staff person, or actually the auditor?
So as proposed, it has an acknowledgement for a chair. We also worked closely and received input from the police auditor, who has and assists in a number of other committees at other cities that they're currently contracted with, and those models also utilize a chairperson.
Okay, so once we have the chairperson and advisory group is set up and they go through issues, will that be handled mostly then taken, and that advice taken directly by the auditor and delivered properly to the police department for work on, or will it come back to the city council and then go back to you?
I don't know if I understand the question.
Now, is the advisory group, once they have, giving you advice, or giving an advice about a situation, whatever, through the auditor, will it come to city council at that point, or does it just stay in-house in the committee and goes through the auditor, who then will work with you to solve whatever issue is?
So I would just advise, Mayor, I would just say, like any other committee or commission, when we are working on a specific topic, if it's something in the council purview, we would be bringing that back. If it's something that it's like the IPA is reviewing a policy and the advisory committee is giving us some feedback on that, it would go to the IPA. So it would go to the individual or the group that it's affecting. And obviously, like we do with any CCB, we bring it back to council when it's in the council purview.
Right. And what I would also note is that these, the enabling legislation that's before the council addresses a number of these things, like section four on duties and authority, remember, this is an advisory body, and like all the advisory body that the council creates that's really advisory to the council, even though it's going to be providing important input for staff, especially the police department. So section four says, PSAC, and its members are charged with the following duties: reviewing, discussing, and providing comments to the city council regarding the IPA's annual report. So those are things that will come to the council anyway, but now you get extra perspective from the PSAC, providing comments on existing and recommended police policies, revealing and providing comments to the city council on the department's annual military equipment reports, as the chief just indicated, and the city's military equipment use ordinance, closely related. So it's an advisory body to the council that will be providing feedback to the council so that the council can give direction, taking that into account, and lots of input, obviously, to the city staff. And the other thing I was going to note is that its organization and its selection of a chair is also covered. That's section 10. Staffing support is expressly, you know, the chief is absolutely right that we don't list all the staff that are going to be supporting, because it's, you know, ultimately all of us, but it's primarily the police department and members of my office that are going to be attending those meetings and supporting the PSAC as the staff support for the regular meetings and then for their administrative duties. Thanks.
Good. That sort of references how much the council or the council liaison are going to be involved in this whole process as we go through whatever the procedures are. So mostly it's going to be the in-house and the advisory to the staff working at that, and when it has to come up to council, the liaison will probably bring it up to council, or staff will bring it up to council as needed. But it's not going to be a lot of council, like every month, we're not going to be getting a report and a decision by council on this, on this committee.
I would just say that, and if you have something else to add, Eric, I'm sure, but I would say that in your council reports on, you know, on every meeting that we have, when you say, "I attended the PSAC meeting, and this time we talked about X, Y, Z," so that'll be your update to the rest of council on.
Yeah, I'm just going through the procedures of what it's going to look like in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Exactly. And that's tradition, that's why, that's why, that's really the function of the liaison for this body and the other bodies, so that there's regular updates as needed. And we've never presumed to tell the council liaisons, our bosses, how they should do that, and they're perfectly capable of doing it. If there are questions, we're happy to help. But that's really the regular feedback loop and the benefit of have, of a body having a council liaison. Thanks.
Councilmember Kater Thompson?
So back to the youth. I would like to have some, you know, youth outside the city limits, if they go to the Petaluma schools. But would they be a two, could they be a two-year term instead of four? Because high school's three years, so I'm not sure if four years is reasonable for the youth.
And what happens if they're a senior? That's what I'm, you know.
No, exactly. I know. So we should, well, that's true. If they're a senior, then they're only going to get one year. So we should at least work through that, but, because I don't think the four year is reasonable.
Yeah, as proposed, there's also, there's procedures in the resolution as to how vacancies are filled, and those, if someone had to separate from their position, it comes back to the council, and I think there's a different, a new recruitment. So if a student wasn't enabled to continue with the obligation, we would then bring it back for you all to select a replacement.
I guess I just, I don't want to be discouraged, keen as a four-year term, you know, even if they're going to be a senior and it's a year, that would be a value also.
We could do, I think, we could look at what we did with the youth commission, and maybe, I think, maybe those were one year? I don't know, but maybe we could look at that. Or they two.
But that was one of the challenges of the youth commission, because it was basically an itinerant population of very busy young people who wanted to get involved, but, you know, had college applications and things like that, and.
Okay, so maybe we think on this for a second and see if the other questions lead us into this as well, because I know, for my question, the term youth doesn't appear in the resolution, nor does it, it does or doesn't in the resolution?
It does not. We didn't, the current draft does not prescribe a youth appointee. It leaves that open, and as I said, we're happy to get your direction.
So, right, and of six appointments, you know, one youth seems very good, not necessarily necessary, depending on the experience pool and interest pool that turns out. So we're not obligated to have a youth. We're incentivized to include all parts of our community. And I appreciate the business owner, the person with the stake in town, not having to live in town, you know, I mean, they, I mean, what's the Supreme Court decision on United? We're corporations, we're people too, you know? And so, I mean, I think if you have a business interest in town, having ability to be on this is broad. But I'm kind of, I'm of a mind of, I want to see who applies. I want to see what kind of talent, skills we can bring to this. And the commitment too, because it's a lot of commitment to, the ramp up on learning police procedure is going to be huge. And so I have no problem with making our only out-of-town a, the business model where there's a stake in it. And so I'm okay with the way it's written currently and the intention it's written currently. And I think, Councilmember Kater Thompson, did you, were you next hand up? Now, and Councilmember Poszke, you were next hand up?
Yeah, but I was getting, I thought we were getting into comments here, and if you want to get.
Questions? Right, let's try and keep it on questions, if we can. So thank you for passing. Council, Vice Mayor Shribs, questions?
Yeah, just back to you, as being a high school teacher and understanding that age group a little bit, and experience with a couple of the commissions, already, and the Climate Commission had two youth advisors on it, and the second year, they almost didn't show up at all. You get, if you can get a one-year commitment from high school students, usually a junior or senior year, getting them into that second year is extremely difficult. The other thing I've run into is on other committees, is when we're talking, oh, we're just going to go ahead and replace. We've run into the problem of replacement, and there's a couple of folks we're missing, but the clerk's office, we have to go through a rotation. And they said, oh, no, it's, we're too busy at this time to actually do the whole work of recruiting and doing all that. We'll wait till the next year when we do the full recruitment. So recruitment, unless we have a special change in policy or maybe different, so I just want to ask maybe the clerk about how to recruit, if there is missing values, missing persons, especially the youth, there's so many missing, and if it's open meetings enough, if the youth could actually be an invitee for a year at a time, instead of being one of the core six, if they could just be invited to be a participant, like an intern or something. That could even be a paid position as a possibility that would really get much more commitment from. So I was just wondering if we could, is it possible to rework this, this youth into something that gets a little bit more commitment for at least a full year, because sometimes they last just six months, and then summer happens and they're gone? And then, and if we can make that student a, either an intern, paid intern, or a, just a one-year addendum to the voting members, I guess, to the six, is there ways of doing that?
Well, we're, I'll start to help with that. You know, we're here to receive the council's direction, as we mentioned. As we also mentioned, we currently, the draft before the council currently does not prescribe a youth member. And we've talked a little bit about some of the, some of our experience with youth members on other city subordinate bodies. There's currently no subordinate body positions in the city that are compensated positions, so that would be something new that would raise some additional issues we'd need to potentially consider. But if the majority of the council want us to look at that, we certainly can. So, you know, it, we'll be happy to see where the majority of the council is directing on that and address that.
Councilmember now.
If I could just also address, these will be publicly accessible meetings, so if there's a youth community member that has interest, but it can't make the commitment, we'd welcome their participation and attendance, and I think there's an opportunity for them to have engagement in the meetings and speak as well. So there may be a little bit of best of both worlds there.
You referring to as public member?
Yeah. It's a public meeting that we would welcome public participation beyond the committee members, but they wouldn't be held to the attendance or the time commitments, so they could participate as much or as little as they wanted to.
Councilmember now.
On, going on that youth path, we have to define youth, because at 18, you're an adult. So do we want to recruit like 15 to, you know, 17-year-olds? Because in the eyes of the law, at 18, you're no longer a youth, you're an adult in the world of law enforcement. So that's just one thing. And then the other thing, I know it's come up with some of our other committees, about ad hoc committees within the committee. And would we have to put in vocabulary about an ad hoc committee if like a couple of the, this new committee members wanted to do some research on some subject in law enforcement in the city? Could they make an ad hoc committee?
Right, that's a question, yeah. Is that true of all committees, that an ad hoc can be formed by declaration of the committee?
So all of the different bodies that the council has created as subordinate bodies are subject to the Brown Act requirements? These are bodies that meet in public with agendized meetings, and we make that expressly clear in the enabling legislation, and this is no exception. So standing committees or ad hoc committees, subcommittees made up exclusively of legislative body members of the PSAC will be subject to all the Brown Act requirements. That's something that we, that the staff supporting the meetings try to use some care about in advising the bodies to make sure that, A, we're satisfying the Brown Act and make sure that that activity is going to help further its duties under its enabling legislation. And so there'll be staff supporting this body too. And if, it could be that the staff might request or might recommend some kind of subcommittee be formed, or it might be that staff might counsel against it, depending on the impetus that's leading to interest in that. So, I mean, we've got subordinate bodies that have used subcommittees extensively, like the Climate Action Commission, because that's been kind of a research body that's putting forth ideas for the city and how to respond to climate change. Others, it's much less common, so.
I think you're saying there's a lot of variability of what might happen. It's more case by case than we might. Right. And guided by the legislation the council ultimately adopts that will guide this body and give it its duties, and something that staff will help.
help support them on for compliance purposes, and also that they're, they're effective in carrying out their charge.
I just want to remind us to turn off our things. There's an echo in the room because...
Councilmember Cater Thompson?
I'm ready.
Okay. Good. I'd like to open public comment, and I'll turn it over to our moderator, our clerk to make all the announcements.
Yes, we received three comments online, and those were posted to the website. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dais will be reset for each speaker.
And I'm not seeing any cards, and I'm not seeing any, hearing any footprints running up to the front there. So, we will now close public comment on things. And I'll bring it back to council and Councilmember Barnacle.
I'll actually, I'll defer to Councilmember Posake to lead this off if he wants. I saw him put his hand up. All right. So, I note that we have two open youth members. I don't think we want to specify a youth member. If youth want to apply, let them. I'll also note that for any committee, we want the most qualified person. And I don't think that my, I'm looking for people who are going to be deeply invested in understanding the, the position that, understanding the, the profession. I'm looking for people who are going to dig into the data, ask tough questions, things like that, review the independent auditor's report before it comes to council, give feedback so that we, when it comes to us, the PSCAC has said, this is, this is a report reviewed, given input on it, and we, you know, think the council should accept it as written. And so, I don't want to, like, I think that the resolution is just fine as, as written. I think the, you know, like any, composing any commission or committee, we're going to look for, you know, diversity of viewpoints and things like that. But I don't know how we got into the youth conversation and all that stuff. But I think it's, it's great, just as written. I'm excited to move forward with it, and I'm really excited to put this group to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Posake?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. I mean, the short answer is I agree with Councilmember Barnacle in almost any respect, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, I think this is going to be as important as any committee we have. I think we want the six best people we can get. Obviously, not if they're all small business people or if they're all teachers, you know, but I think we can consider that. I just, for things like this, I really think it's important to get the best people and to not constrain ourselves with having to have one, one of these, one of these, one of these. And not even each of our council members, each pick one member.
I think the, the good news and the bad news is the decision will come down to the council, and you're going to have to pick the six best. And this is absolutely the way we want to do it. The latitude is there to recruit as, from all, all parties and places. And, and I think that, that just having that broad width, it requires good marketing. I mean, you have to reach out to all the organizations we've talked about and some we've overlooked now. But all that latitude's there, and the final decision's on council. And so, I think it's well-written, as is with any cleanup exception the city attorney would like to make. And Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, I'll make one more comment. I don't think we should do weighted voting from the councils, from the council members. It shouldn't be a weighted thing that, that allows, you know, someone with two votes to get in. So, I think it should be done without weighted voting. We've done that in the past where weighted voting has created some, some tricky situations, and I just don't think we should have weighted voting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shribs?
Just, just back to the youth issue. I would agree that, that having the six best for especially long-term, because you want folks with lots of history. Many times, the student who does join in is just one individual, and to, and they may not be the best representative of students in general. But I would recommend that we actually seek out youth input, that we actually go out and solicit input at the high schools. Maybe it could be leadership classes at this, at the high schools, at, that there's like three or four major high schools, especially the alternative schools be included, because the at-risk kids need to be included on this. But if we could make sure that what this committee is doing and how the police are doing in, in general, to get that input from a larger segment of youth going to the high school campuses and asking and participating is much better input than having a single individual youth try to represent the youth. Because I have not seen that work really well as representation from the high schools. So, I'd rather see consistent outreach rather than individual input from, from youth for this issue. And inviting them to, to the public meetings when they do have issues, that they would be, when they do show up, they'll come in force when there is a real issue show up. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Okay, so, that was, that was dizzying. So, did I hear Councilmember Barnacle's motion? Councilmember Cater Thompson's motion? And I heard Councilmember Now as the second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Excuse me, council, before we go to that, could I just confirm my suggested edit for the, for section three? So, my recommendation, if the council will accept it, would be that, that it's enactment of the resolution include a revision to the first sentence in section three, such that it would read, "The PSCAC shall consist of six community members representing diverse interests and backgrounds, and one city council member is a city council liaison to the committee for a total of seven seats on the PSCAC." Thank you.
And the motion maker, okay with that? Second's okay with that? Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks so much. Thank you very much, Chief, and Lieutenant, for that. It was another big step forward. Our next item is item 11, Public Hearing on Chart Changes and Updates Related to the Master Fee Schedule in a Resolution Establishing a Schedule of Fees and Charges for the City's Services. And for helping us do this matter, our Jesse Gooch, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor McDonald and council members. On April 8th, you heard a presentation from city staff and Willdan Financial Services on the city's recent user fee study and proposed user fee schedule update. Tonight, we're back before you to recommend that you adopt the finalized updated fee schedule. The user fee study reviewed all city user fees and updated the fee amounts based on current costs, as well as adding new fees that reflect current services offered. This study was much needed, as the last time these fees were comprehensively reviewed and updated was in 2016. We estimate that this update will result in increased revenue of about $600,000 annually for the general fund and about $500,000 annually for other city funds. A few questions were raised at the workshop that I'd like to address now. First, the updated fee amounts do include the full reasonable cost of providing the service, including the overhead cost that's related to administering the fee. All fees have been evaluated by staff in their respective departments, as well as our consultants, and have been determined to be worth collecting to reimburse the city for the cost of providing the service. Secondly, there were questions regarding the fee revenue from the rental of turf fields in Petaluma. All the revenue collected from field rentals is set aside to cover the cost of maintaining the fields, natural or otherwise. And finally, the proposed new fee for tree removals has been pulled off of the finalized fee schedule. This fee is going to undergo further internal review and will be brought back to council as part of the upcoming tree ordinance. So, tonight's recommended action is to adopt the resolution establishing a schedule of fees and charges for city services and to repeal the previously adopted fees and charges for such services. This resolution not only updates the current fee schedule, but it also allows for annual increases based on CPI until our next user fee study. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to council, any questions on the fee presentation? Councilmember Posake?
Hi. And I might have missed this. I think maybe you just said it, but my brain wasn't thinking in that, in that thing. In terms of the CPI increases, that's going to apply to every one of these or not?
Yes. Going forward, it will apply to every fee, and those will go into effect every July 1st. So, every fiscal year, we're update based on the CPI as of February.
Thanks.
You mentioned a $650,000 gain this year in expected increase in revenue. What percentage does that represent of fees?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. More curiosity and necessity. Thank you very much. Not seeing any other questions except from the vice mayor?
I'm just wondering, maybe I've asked earlier. So, who are the most impacted applicants from all the fees that we've changed? Who's going to be affected the most as far as either individually? That's most important for me, but also in, in general. Where's the major impact happening?
The major impact is happening in our building permit fees. Those have not been adjusted since, I believe, 2011, if not earlier. So, it's been quite a long time since we've done any updates. We haven't even been doing CPI updates to those fees. So, they have been frozen for many, many years. And this adjustment, while it will have a large impact, it's going to do great things for us, because we've literally been subsidizing these fees by not collecting enough. So, in order to make sure that we're not using any taxpayer dollars to cover these private services that we're offering, we need to make sure that we've got full cost recovery.
And that'll also improve service. It's not just for us. It's also going to help us improve service, so we can provide staffing, adequate staffing and building.
Yeah. So, is there any, why would we be concerned about, especially for the building permits? Because I'm going through the process myself. And so, is there, for, for building permits, are the fees possibly going to impact folks that are, especially the folks like myself, who are trying to get smaller projects through backyard-type things, the small changes to the garages and the like? Will the fees be large enough that it might inhibit folks from applying? Because I already know folks are really concerned about fees as they are.
No, the, while the fees are going up, they're not going up enough for those smaller projects that it would have a major impact. It's really going to be the large developments that are going to see the impact of the higher fees.
Good. And I think we're shifting from the fees, just based on flat fees, but also looked like some infrastructure requirements. So, I've heard that, that being recommended, that, that how much infrastructure would need to be included for that project, that the fees might actually go change based on that, as well as square footage.
I'd have to take a closer look at that to know for sure.
Because I think there was some flexibility when I looked at it. There was some flex in, in charging fees based on those two things, square footage and amount of, of infrastructure that had to be done by the city.
We can circle back with you, Vice Mayor Shribs and the rest of council on that response.
I saw the language in, in the building permit area. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Actually, I have our Director of Community Development, Brian. Are, can you respond to that, or is that something we need to circle back?
So, Vice Mayor, that's something, if you could just provide specifics on which one, which line items you're looking at, we can get back to you and circle back with that answer.
Yeah, this wasn't a specific site, but having gone to lots of housing meetings and talking about fee structures, I've, in various places and people, I've heard the recommendations of shifting fees. And I think I saw language in our, so it was a house, if so, if the developer goes in a large development that requires more water line and more internet and more underground services that need to get made, or a larger street that had to get constructed for that project, it's a wider street versus a narrow street, lots of extra costs to get in there, the size of the project, that the amount of work the city has to do to make that development happen. So, the fees could actually be shifted based on the amount of infrastructure that the city would have to provide.
So, I can take that.
Referencing impact fees, Vice Mayor, so that's a, that's not part of this schedule, but something that we will be coming back to council and to provide some options, policy options.
Okay, so that's not in, in this schedule of fees, but, but the impact fees that were, that I was referring, that's actually what it meant. Okay, thank you. Just a shout.
That, that's right. Thanks, Brian. Yes, these are all what we call service fees. And some of them are development-related, but none of them are development impact fees that are in separate regulations and have additional considerations, one of which, under state law, is now going to be that residential impact fees are going to be required to be calculated when they're new fees. So, when we are, next update hours, they'll need to be calculated on a square footage basis rather than a unit basis. And there may be other considerations also, and the, some of the advocacy that, that I'm sure the council's been hearing and staff have too, about looking at ways to, to try to ensure maximum affordability of, of different kinds of dwelling units, especially affordable units in the city. It's going to be in the context of development fees, of the impact fees, that we look at those issues, not the fees before the council tonight, because these are, these are user fees and service fees for use of city facilities.
Good. Thanks for saying that differentiation there, because there's, I mean, the volume of fees that we have before is hard to grasp all of them, even one or two settings. Thank you.
Yeah. And if I can just chime in as well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Eric. Yeah, so the building permit fees is what I was talking about. And so, those are actually based on the valuation of the building. And so, that's the user fee portion that we're covering. We have a whole separate schedule for all the development impact fees.
Thank you very much. Alas, it precipitates a question from me, which would be the building fees. We, you know, we're pushing the electrification. If someone switches out a appliance, a water heater that requires a permit, can you find that fee in here? I, you know, it's a little difficult for me. Or we can take it under advisement for, you know, report out the impact to our climate changes. And often, hand in hand with that is an electric panel upgrade, which is a fee. And I'm wondering, you know, what we've done on, on those two specific items. Maybe I could ask that as under advisement rather than...
Our Community Development Director, it looks like he might be able to respond to that.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor. And so, we do have a, there is a proposed slight increase on the water heater. Part of the exercise we did was, you know, we don't want to increase it so much so that it acts as a deterrent, right? And so, we, we looked at how, we compared our proposed fee with our local jurisdictions, you know, some in Marin, others in Sonoma. And so, we're right in the middle of that. But that's something we're always mindful of. If something is too expensive, especially for something like a water heater, which was something that I personally went and upgraded, you know, those are other considerations. And so, we do feel it's still at that approachable level. And so, there is a line item I can scramble to pull up. And then, the second part of your question is around the electric panel. And so, also having gone through that over this past year, there is a, an inspection of the panel. And so, there's an inspection fee tied to the electrical, there's a separate electrical panel permit as well. And so, those two, I believe, are going up slightly, but also in line with other jurisdictions in the area.
When I, when I word searched for electrical, I came up with electrical permit fees, minimum permit fees, and we were at a smallest number, and we're at 250 or something now. It's 300, 330% increase on that fee. But I'm not sure that's the right fee we're talking about. So, yes, I would love to have that data come, come back to us at a later time. And my other question was, what have we done for outreach into the building community if the building is the most impacted of these fees?
So, we do do outreach with the Home Builders Association. So, we will be sending out the fee schedule. Nothing will go into effect until July. So, they will have some notice.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to open the public comment period and asking our clerk to make an announcement.
Yes, we did not receive any public comments via email. But I will read the instructions. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. The timer behind the dais will be reset for each speaker.
And thank you very much. And with no, no public comment apparent, we close public comment, bring it back to the council for any comments before we have our vote. Any comments? Any motions?
I'll make the motion.
So that's, a motion by Barnacle, second by Cater Thompson, and may we have the roll call vote?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Now we move to item 12, Adoption. A second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Petaluma to reduce enforceable speed from 25 miles per hour to 15 miles per hour within 500 feet of school zones, and from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour speeds within a business activity district pursuant to vehicle code sections. And to help us with that, we have Jeff Stutzman, our Deputy Director of Operations, to walk us through. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So this is the adoption second reading for the reduction of the speed limits within the school zones and the business activity districts. On April 8th, the city council introduced the proposed ordinance with a six-to-one vote, and the proposed ordinance reduces the enforceable speeds from 25 to 15 mile an hour within the 500 feet of a school zone when students are present, and from 25 to 20 within this, within the business activity districts pursuant to the California vehicle code. So with, with that, I'm, I'm here to answer any additional questions we may have about the speed reductions.
That's a fabulous presentation. Thank you very much. I love second readings. Questions from the council? And apparently, so does council, except, Councilmember Thompson, please.
Yeah, because I've been testing myself. How am I going to get down to 15 miles per hour? And it's not easy. And in, in a business district, it is really easy, but when, depending where the school is, you know, if it's on McDowell, you're, you're on a major street, and if you're on Maria Drive, and I think it's, that's just a comment. I definitely have concerns about the 15, and people getting tickets, and how realistic is it?
That sounds like a question.
20, I think, is very realistic.
Well, Councilmember, Councilmember Cater Thompson, I would just, and I don't know if staff are here, maybe Jeff can weigh in, but you think about the impact of somebody going 15 miles an hour versus 25 and hitting someone. So I just, it's not easy, but I think it's necessary.
No, I mean, it was kind of testing. 15 was more difficult. 20 was easy, and 25, I could slow down. So.
It just makes you more cognizant.
It makes you more aware.
Yep.
Yeah.
I can't pass the, we're premature here. Let's go quickly to public comment, and invite the public to come to the front, to comment on this item, fill out a card, and seeing no one pushing to forward, I'm going to declare, would you like to speak on this issue?
Um, yes.
And, and we'll allow the card to be filled out after.
Councilmember, mayor, staff. My name is Wayne Exstrom, and I do live close to one of the schools in my neighborhood. I don't know where you came up with the number of 500 feet for a speed reduction, because some of the vehicles now are 1,500 pounds more, like the battery-operated cars that we're proposing are much heavier. So those speed zones and the stopping distance are regulated by how much the weight of the vehicle is. Now, my street has become with, the Deer Creek area where, where they have the shopping centers is now becoming a local truck route. So a lot, a lot larger vehicles are coming down the residential area faster, and they're, they're not splitting the lanes, they're crossing into the oncoming traffic. They're cutting into the bicycle lanes. So I, I'm kind of concerned why they came up with 500 feet to the school zone. We should have traffic control across the whole town, not just in a remote area. But I appreciate your time, and thank you for hearing me. And if we can reduce the speed, it would be a lot safer for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes public comment, and I definitely think he captured the gist of what's, what we're saying here, is that slower speeds are safer, in a nutshell. Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, thank you for the comment, Mr. Exstrom. In the past, actually, we're only allowed to reduce speeds right now because of state law. In the past, state law has prohibited cities from even reducing speeds down below 25 miles an hour, and so we're only allowed to do it within 500 feet, because that's what the state allows. Trust me, I'd love to do this in many more areas of Petaluma. And with that, I'll gladly make the motion to make it safer around schools.
And I'll second that.
So we have Barnacle with a motion, and, and Cater Thompson with a second. And I just want to comment at the end, and so does the vice mayor. So Vice Mayor Shribs, comment?
Yeah, I'm pretty much in favor of moving in this direction as best we can. I would just like to make sure that we have enough public education around this, and especially about the 15 mile an hour, and when it has to be 15 mile an hour around which schools, because I can see that folks are going to look at this and to realize, from the practical point of view, which is brought up, boy, it is really hard to do when you're driving, just moving down the street, because it's easy. I mean, 15 miles an hour, I mean, I, I do that on my bicycle, easily. And doing it in a larger car, I've got EV car, and so stopping is, can be difficult, or slowing down even. Like, you take your foot off the gas pedal, and you slow down, and so I'm going 30 miles an hour, and all of a sudden I'm down to 20 miles an hour, but my car is heavy enough, it just keeps floating at 30 miles an hour. And so I actually have to put on brakes to actually get down to 15. So there is a, a practical thing where everybody really has to brake fairly hard, in some cases, in that 500-foot zone, if the kids are there or not. So we do need to have a major education around this, and, and really seek out public support, because when folks realize 15, if you start enforcing it at some point, that could get a lot of folks upset, and you think, though it's absolutely necessary, and we have to do it, we're going to have to use a little soft touch to make sure everybody is bought in and willing, and otherwise enforcement's going to be just a nightmare for our police force to try to enforce something without that, that, that great cooperation that we really want to have. Because I just see it going down Adobe Road, past Adobe School, folks not slowing down from 50, and then buzzing right through, through, past the school all the time. So, and I know that happens at the other schools also. Folks traveling 30 miles an hour easily, and getting down to 15, very, very difficult. So let's have a huge program out there of public buy-in and communications, because this is very new and different for, for our public.
Councilmember Cater Thompson?
Quick question. When you talk about Old Adobe School and Old Adobe Road, that's not within the city, so would that be part of this, since it's county?
No, this, yeah, no, it's not included within, within this. It's outside the city's city limit, so it wouldn't be included. And also, there's requirements that go along with it of, that has to meet certain requirements, so it has to be a road that is already under 30 miles an hour below. So we're not necessarily talking about North McDowell, or like South Mc, South McDowell. It would be more like Madison, those type of streets that border schools.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff. And our, the, the city's police power, our regulatory authority only extends toward jurisdictional boundaries, so.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Now?
I just want to mention that we do have the reduced speed signals, signs, they tell us your mileage, and it says, "Please slow down." I really appreciate theirs. There's one on McDowell, by McDowell School. There's one on St. Francis, and I believe, I know it's not in our jurisdiction, but out on Old Adobe, it says, "Slow down, your speed is," and it gives you a, a, a digital readout of your speed. And so it, it tells you, oh, we need to slow down. So I, I really appreciate those. So if we have more of those, in those neighborhoods like St. Francis, McDowell, where people do go really fast, because their street, Maria used to do that, going to Meadow.
Councilmember Posake?
Yes, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think I, I think I remember from the first read that there was a lot of reassurances, that there were going to be a lot of warnings and not, not tickets to begin with on this.
Yeah, I believe we discussed enforcement at the first reading of this, and, and certainly it's quite been, and I just wanted to add my two cents on this, is everybody should drive an electric vehicle at least once in their life, or should learn to drive on it. Because you're worried about how many miles you're going to get off that little battery, you don't go as fast. And because it has regenerative braking, every time you come off the gas, it really decelerates you fast. So get out of your car that idles at 30, and move over and, and, and do the smart thing. It's a, it's a great way to learn how the, the correct way to drive. And with that, I'm going to invite the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posake?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You know, before we close, and I know everybody's packing up, there is an announcement I think we, we want to make, and, and there are people in our community that help our community along, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Cater Thompson to discuss such comment tonight.
Thank you. Resident Tom Baker passed away. He's a long-term resident of Petaluma, and he was part of Westgate Realty, and, and he's just done a lot more for our community. And he was, he was a nice, he was a nice guy. And so it was unfortunate, but he's in a better place right now.
It's important to recognize those who've helped get our community to where it is today.
Yeah.
And encourage all our committees and commissions to, to be that person in the future, take that role model forward. And with that, we'll close the meeting in honor of Tom Baker. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.